Tell me, you hit this way out of the driveway and you live in summer.
Hey Robbie, how are you doing, sir? Good to see you as well. You doing okay? Did you got a driver?
Good morning Patty. I'm good and yourself?
I am, I'm doing well, thank you.
Hey Patty.
Hey Mike.
So you got this?
Yes.
I got you, everybody's got a copy.
And is there a wallet?
Yes, I need to pull some money online.
Absolutely.
If you don't, I might have it in my phone. I won't, I won't swear, but you got it.
Yep.
I'm not shocked.
Okay.
You got everything.
Hmm, that's fine. Or I can, you want me to text it too?
Yeah, just text me.
I'll do.
I'll get, I'll get myself all the time.
No problem, that's fine. You can do it at your own pace. Doing alright tonight?
How you doing? I'm Chuck Winfrey.
Hey, I'm Patty Stokes. It's nice to meet you Joe.
We've talked on the phone a few times.
I think we.
Hey.
Yes, I've been around a long time and so have you.
Yeah, that's right. No, we're both very young though, very young for our age.
We started as infants. Yes, we did. That's the only explanation I can come up with.
I'll take it.
I got access to all that on the drive. And it may be on that sheet I sent you too. I just sent it to seconds ago. And maybe like the levels may be on that sheet. See what it says. I'll, I'll look back and see. I don't know, I don't know. I'll look back and see what it was. Thank you.
You know, I couldn't help but pull the trigger on that one with it because.
I mean, it's something, you've got something to show for it.
Oh yeah. Something else I figured it's been on plastics. Right away. That's not gonna work. That's right, we need to sell it themselves. We bought certain things before.
That's right.
Appreciate it.
I'm glad you can do that.
Yes, sir. Good to see you. Good to see you. You're the guy with the sharp pencil. You're the guy with the sharp pencil.
Mr. Jones. Let me begin by just saying welcome to you all. We're gonna call this to order. It is 7:00 PM. It is December the 8th, 2022. This is our normal council meeting for the month of December. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you bow your heads, I'll do the invocation. Dear Lord, please guide us this evening. This is important that we are all on the same page with so many different things that we have going on. It's also important that we get support from our community. Please guide us in your way so that we might better benefit our community and our, our town of Stokesdale. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Review and adopt the agenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one item. You reference on the agenda under old business, number 13, which reads consideration of certificate of municipal declaration to enact speed limits and request for concurrence for speed limit reduction from 35 to 25 miles per hour on Angel Purdue Adano and Athens Road. This was continued from November. We received an email from staff today saying it might be best if we continue this to January. Robbie, if you could just explain the reasoning for that, that might help.
Yeah, absolutely. So before the last meeting, we did have that paperwork ready for strictly Angel Purdue Road.
Right.
And then at the meeting, we added Athens in the motion at, I'm sorry, Adano. And then since then, we've had Athens to be added.
I did add Athens, yes.
Yep. And so we're just pretty much waiting on the revised petition. Ms. Martin did reach out to both of them. They were out of the office today. And Gil Waggy is the traffic engineer for this area and he's retiring this month. And so Isaac, I can't remember his last name, I think it's Sawyer, is taking over. And so I think there's a bit of a transition period there. So we're just pretty much waiting on the paperwork from the state.
So if we continue this to January?
That would be, that would be my recommendation, continue it to January.
By extension to that, we've already voted at least on Angel Purdue Road?
Correct.
That was set up in November and on there. Are we getting anything moving with whoever? To get Angel Purdue Road's speed limit reduced to 25?
It'll all happen at one time. It'll all be on one petition. So instead of saying, that original petition said, Angel Purdue will now have a new petition that says Angel Purdue, Adano, and Athens. And then that way you can vote on one petition all at once.
Okay, that helps. Thank you Robbie.
Absolutely.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to continue that. Strike this from the agenda and continue with January.
Any objection? We'll do just that. We'll amend it. Any other amendments?
I make a motion that the agenda be adopted.
Second.
Jim. Eric.
Aye.
Mr. Land, and Mr. uh.
Aye.
Jimmy. Kim.
Aye.
And I am aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt you a second, I think it'd be appropriate to introduce our new town attorney.
Mostly, most appropriate. Let me begin by just saying, our new town attorney is Mr. Charles Winfrey. We're very, very pleased that we have him. And then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Jones.
Well, I'd, I'd like to welcome Mr. Chuck Winfrey, our new town attorney. He's with the law firm of Adams and Winfrey. He has fan, deep family ties in Summerfield. So he's, he's a local, you might say. He's lived in Summerfield, attended Northwest Area middle school up to a point. And he's served four years on the Guilford County Commissioners, which I find to be commendable. And he has broad legal experience and I think he's gonna be an asset for the town.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Thank you.
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from October the 13th, 2022.
I'll second.
Those are from the closed session?
That's a closed session meeting.
Let me pull up the agenda. The closed session is from... There we go. Yeah, the closed session is from February. I've got those here. And the, I'm sorry, the closed session, that was written kind of confusing. October 13th, 2022, or the closed session minutes that I have here in my hand. February 10th, 2022 is the open session minutes. That should be in everybody's packet.
We have, we have a motion and we have a second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wrong, wrong one. We were... You said October 13th, it's the closed session.
That's correct, yes.
We gotta, we gotta have those first before. I was mistaken when we read the.
I'd like to withdraw my motion and make a motion to continue.
I'll second that motion. Jim.
Okay, we're, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we're continuing the vote on the October 13th, 2022 closed session minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jim.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Jimmy.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
And I am also aye.
I'll continue that to the January 12th meeting.
Yes, sir. With, with that, I'll make a motion that we do adopt the February 10th, 2022 regularly town council minutes as submitted to council.
I'll second that.
There's one thing I think I noticed here. The, I think we can hopefully, it's on the fly, but the, the year is not included in the header. It just says February 10th. Mr. Wagner, if you'd see to it that that is corrected.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby? Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landris?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. The closed session, someone help me.
We're, we're now at the public safety reports and we have Randy Southern here.
Okay.
Welcome Randy.
Good evening, Randy Southern, Stokesdale Fire Department. I'm here to report to you that we seem to have created a new norm at the Stokesdale Fire Department. We run about 85 calls every month. So we kept up our status and we ran 85 calls again in the month of November. Forty-two of those were medical related, 14 of those were related to fire calls in some variety, and 29 were related to other type calls. Our tip, given that it's the Christmas holiday season, would be that we hope our citizens will be very careful about the placement of Christmas decorations. From trees to gifts to stockings to whatever you have. Try not to put them near heat building sources. Fireplaces, heat vents, kerosene heaters if you're using them, whatever might be the case for heating. Particularly Christmas trees dry out very quick, so keep them away from heat sources and keep them watered. And that gentleman is our report for this month unless you have some questions.
Questions for Randy?
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner, would you close the door over there?
Got you, thank you.
Next is administrative reports. This administrative report is from our deputy town secretary Robbie Lee Wagner II.
Clerk, town clerk.
I got you. Let's see, yes. So the admin report is, let's see, this is from Priscilla. This is our water report. So we had nine new water meters installed. 14 applications for transfer of service. Thirty-four meters and applications are on hold for builders. Fifteen work orders were prepared. Nineteen 811s and 721 water bills have been sent out. The, as you all know, the cleaning service contract for the town hall building and the facilities at the town park expired on November the 30th of this year. Town staff has been working with the town property committee to research a new cleaning service. The town park has been, I'm sorry, town staff has been researching options for employee health insurance. We have found two possible options, one being continuation of coverage under Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina, the other being a new provider called Friday Health Plans of North Carolina. And just a reminder that a decision is needed by December the 10th for Blue Cross and Blue Shield and December the 15th for Friday Health. Town staff has been working alongside Aaron Babson with Hazen and Sawyer on the final reports and applications to obtain the final approval for water line extension in Phase 1 of the Blacksmith subdivision. And then, got it broke up in two parts here. Yates Construction repaired another emergency water leak at the southwest corner of NC Highway 68 and Hall River Road. And we have, of course, met with, town staff has met with our new town attorney, Mr. Winfrey. And this past month, I did attend the New Clerks Institute and the Master Clerks Academy in Durham that was hosted by the School of Government. And I have registered and got a seat for the 2023 IMC Clerk Certification Institute for 20, for next year. And that'll span the entire year, one week a month, every quarter.
Thank you Robbie.
Absolutely.
Do we have anyone here from the planning board? The events committee. We've got a big event coming up this weekend.
Yeah, the parade. Excited about it. Fingers crossed and praying for good weather. Right now, we look to be okay. So many people to thank here. If I start thanking some, I forget others, but you know, to the best of my recollection, it appears we have a record number of sponsors. And you know, with the sponsors and participants and what they've contributed to the town for the parade. You know, the parade will self-fund itself. That's always a great thing. So thank you to our sponsors. Always thank you to the fire department for their assistance in the parade and you know, Robbie's been fantastic to work with Jimmy and Tim. Also Jimmy did a, Priscilla put that sled together, so hats off to those.
Don't get in it.
Yeah. The test comes Saturday, Jimmy.
Oh, you're gonna?
Yeah, Saturday's gonna be a great day. Looking forward to it. We, Purple Wagon's events is gonna have their craft, craft fair or whatever you call it, that morning at the United Methodist Church, Highland, Highland North Music School. They'll be playing from about 12 to 2. And I believe we'll also have some, some gym mining with Foothills Gym Mining will be there. So just an all-day nice event for the town and Merry Christmas to all.
We look forward to it. Property committee.
The only thing we have is, we've got an agenda item for the cleaning service, so we'll talk about that.
All right.
When 17 gets to us.
All right. Town park improvement committee. Mr. T.
Good evening. I'm T. Stevenson, 7900 Carroll Way, Stokesdale. I'm the chairman of the Park Improvement Committee. Just a quick update on the progress that we have made since our last town council meeting. We, the council or the committee has met with a representative from Cunningham Recreation and discussed also the playground extension project that we have proposed previously. With some, I guess, some alternative options with that. He recommended changing the location of the proposed expansion to the south boundary of the existing playground rather than extending along the western boundary, which is what we had drawn and diagrammed in our last meeting. With that, that actually will give us a little bit more area. We did discuss that proposed change in a special called meeting last week with the town council. The, this afternoon, in fact, we received a revised plan and cost estimate from Next Level Recreation of the Carolinas, which is what we had used in the presentation last month at town council. And this was adding a couple of pieces of equipment and expanding the, the area that we originally proposed. And we have gotten an initial representation of those changes. As voted on in the, the town council meeting on November 10th, 2022, we will be finalizing the RFP requesting firm quotes and detailed proposals for this particular portion of the project, the playground project. As we reported in our presentation on November the 10th, we are waiting a cost estimate from a contractor for the site work and construction of the new amphitheater that we are proposing. We received the estimates and we'll discuss these in greater detail in our actual agenda item, which is item number 12, coming up in just a few minutes. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. T?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our financials. Ms. Thacker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll start with the general fund and our balance sheet. And I have a few things after I finish with the actual numbers here as well. The balance sheet, the general fund, the American Rescue Plan Act. Our account, we have $723, $723,000. Sorry, $723,965.
Next year.
My apologies for that.
That's next year, Kim.
Is that next year? Okay.
Probably.
Okay. Our Bank of Oak Ridge checking, our money market is $23,336.67. And if you notice on the balance sheet, this, I have updated all the interest. Our interest has gone up. So that's good for us on that. Our total SEDARs in the Bank of Oak Ridge is $2,563,932.19. Fidelity checking is $279,193.80. Petty cash is $150. Our accounts receivable through November 30th. Our Gary, which is the operator responsible and charge, is, his salary was $530.35. Sales tax due is $296.05. The water enterprise reimbursement, which is our shared overhead expense for the month of November, is $10,203.17. Our total accounts receivable is $11,029.57. Okay, and that is for the general fund. Let's flip over to our water. All right. And the Bank of Oak Ridge, our SEDARs total $500,434.04. Capital reserve fund is $190,247.95. Fidelity checking is $634,335.60. The North Carolina Capital Management Fund is $528,833.05. Our regular savings is $45,056.29. Again, our accounts receivable, total water sales as of 11/30. This also includes the November billing that has not come in for the month yet, is $43,797.36. Active 90 days past due accounts is $0. Inactive accounts, 90-plus days, is $6,050.80, and that is 27 accounts. Our sales tax refund due to us at this, as the end of November, is $270. Again, just to reiterate, the water reimbursement that is due to the general fund for the month of November is $10,203.17. The payroll, which is again Gary, the operator's responsible and charge, is $530.35. The total accounts payable for the water account is $10,733.52. For the month of November, our water capacity fees were $3,000 for the month of November. And that is all for the water. I would like to say that I would personally like to thank everyone who's been responsible or been for the parade because I just want to echo what Derek has said. This is, I'm very impressed and I'm happy with our numbers for this year for the, we've had 52 applicants for the parade and we've had 15 sponsors. And this is as of 12/8/2022. And our total for the parade that totals the applicants and the sponsors is $5,050. That's great. And thank you to everyone who's been involved. I know, thank you T. Thank you T. That is amazing. That, I even said that to Derek the other night. We ran into each other and I said, I'm just amazed. That, that's great. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Does anyone have any questions for the financials for me?
Kim, would you like to introduce Mr. Rouse?
Absolutely, I would love to introduce Mr. Rouse. This is Mr. Rex Rouse. He is with Rouse, Rouse, Rouse and Gardner. He is our auditor for the town of Stokesdale. And he finalized our audit for this year. And I'm gonna turn it over to you. It's all yours.
Thank you, Kim. First of all, if you turn to page 1, inside the binder, the independent auditor's report. It states that we have audited the accompanying financial statements of all the funds of the town of Stokesdale as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2022. And related notes to the financial statements. Which collectively comprise the town's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents. In our opinion, based on our audit, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position and results of operations of all of the funds of the town of Stokesdale and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows. And that the statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you'll turn to page 32. Have a comparative balance sheet of the general fund. The total cash at the top of the page, well, let's talk about the fund balance first. The fund balance of the general fund, this is the second line from the bottom. And you see it decreased, 2021 is in the right-hand column and 2022 is in the left-hand column. You can see that your total fund balance decreased from $3,112,502 to $2,982,618 for the year. And that's a decrease of $129,884. And on page 32, the fund balance unassigned, the fund balances available decreased from $2,993,857 to $2,866,324. And if you compare the ratio of the fund balance available to $2,866,324 with the total expenditures, on page 35, you have the total expenditures. The total expenditures for the year, they're in the second column, the actual column. The, the fifth line from the bottom, the total expenditures for the year were $529,869. And the, the fund balance, the available fund balance, the $2,866,324 divided by the $529,869, the total expenditures for the year equals 5.41x. That's almost five and a half years of available fund balance that you have in your, in your general fund. The average statewide level of available fund balance now is 132%. The average town in your population range has one and a third years reserves. You have 5.41x the reserve. So the fund balance in general fund is well above the statewide average. The minimum threshold that LGC recommends is 71%. The towns this size, which was is 5.41x. And the minimum threshold is 71%. The town of Stokesdale unassigned balance last year though, 8.05x, eight, eight years reserved. And, and it went down to five, five times mainly as a result of buying the land for the park improvement. So you have something permanent to, as Jimmy just pointed out, to, to show for, for the fund bounce going down.
It wasn't just parties then.
On, on page 33, the budgeted revenues. Total budgeted revenues in the left-hand column were $393,000. The actual revenues were $399,985. For favorable variance, the actual revenues exceeded the budgeted revenues by $6,985. The actual revenues were down last year. The actual revenues were down last year when they were four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, oh sixty-eight. That's in the fourth column, the last column at the bottom of the page. Your actual revenues were down primarily the result, last year received a COVID relief stimulus payment of forty-five thousand compared with zero this year. Notably, there is no OIBL arm tax for the town of Stokesdale. The, on page thirty-five, budgeted operating expenditures totaled six hundred and twenty-four thousand, six ninety-four. The actual expenditures for the year, as I said, were five hundred twenty-nine, eight sixty-nine. So you had a fable variance. Your actual expenditures were ninety-four thousand, eight twenty-five, less than the budgeted amount. Actual expenditures last year were three hundred and seventy-two thousand, oh sixteen. So actually expenditures in the general fund were up a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight fifty-three, up forty, two point forty-three percent. And by far the largest item, the reason for that increase in expenditures in the general fund, was the capital outlay for the town park land acquisition, which was two hundred and fourteen thousand. And on page thirty-four, the proprietary fund, the Water and Soil Fund reimbursed the general fund by a hundred and eighteen thousand, five thirty-seven. This is about the sixth item from the bottom. Last year, the reimbursement from the Water and Soil Fund to the general fund for the expenses paid by the general fund was a hundred and thirty-nine, seven fifty-seven. One thing, you receive the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and they are not included in the general fund. They're a special revenue fund. They're to be kept separate. And if you turn to page fifteen, you see that at the end of June, you had three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven thirty-three in cash. Kim just reported that that figure is seven hundred and some thousand. Now, as you've seen, received the second installment on those ARPA funds. But it, June thirtieth, they were three hundred and sixty-two thousand. And they're not shown in your fund balance. They're shown as unearned revenue. Those funds will be earned as you expend the money. And so they're suspended in this unearned revenue account, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven thirty-eight. Next, if you'll turn to the comparative balance sheet of the Water and Soil Fund on page thirty-six. The unrestricted cash balance, top of the page, last year was one million, five thirty-seven, one forty-eight. And this year is one million, six twenty-six, seven oh five. Restricted cash, there near the bottom increased, about the fifth line from the top, increased from eighty-seven thousand, nine thirty-six, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six thirty-four. And that's primarily the result of the Capital Reserve Fund. It went up from a hundred thousand, eight ninety-one, to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one forty-one, the third item from the bottom. Capital assets net of accumulated depreciation decreased from two million, eight twenty-one, eight twenty-six, to two million, seven thirty-three, oh thirty-eight. And that was the result of depreciation for the year. The total debt of the Water and Soil Fund increased from fifty-eight thousand, six eighty, six sixty-two, to seventy thousand, three forty-six. And the Water and Soil Fund owed the general fund fifteen thousand, six nineteen, at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And that has been paid off since June thirtieth. The Water and Soil Fund income statement is found on page thirty-seven. And the total revenues in the Water and Soil Fund amounted to six hundred and fifty-three thousand, six thirteen this year, compared with five seventy-seven, five sixty-five last year. That's an increase of seventy-six thousand, oh forty-eight, or thirteen percent. On page thirty-seven, total operating expenses decreased in the Water and Soil Fund from five hundred and seventy-three thousand, two thirty-four to five hundred and forty-one thousand, five eighty-eight. It decreased to thirty-one thousand, six forty-six, or six percent. On page thirty-seven, the net income amounted to a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-two, compared with a net income of seventy-seven oh four for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-one. Depreciation expense amounted to a hundred and sixteen thousand, three twenty-one this year, compared with a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven twelve last year. Depreciation expense was about the same as last year. Page twenty-nine shows the changes in the general fixed assets for twenty-one, twenty-two. Total general fixed assets net of accumulated depreciation at June thirtieth, twenty-two amounted to twenty-one oh eight, nine thirty-one. The general fixed assets at June thirtieth, twenty-one amounted to one million, nine seventy-five, five sixteen, a net increase of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four fifteen. And here again, this was the result of the acquisition of the land for the park, less depreciation expense for the year. The town has no long-term debt, and the town live, there's no property tax. So that is, and has the fund balance available of over five years in your reserves. So that would be exemplary for a whole lot of towns in this state to follow. Going on to the, to the management letter, the two items, the management letter starts off, there are two accompanying letters with your report. The management letter starts off intending and performing our audit of the financial statements. There are two items of concern. This first item, we have in all of the audits for all these small towns and not-for-profits that we audit. Because of the limited number of personnel employed by the town, it is not practical to have inadequate separation duties. The internal controls for the dispersments are stronger because of the vegetarian controls and the independent dual signature check signing requirement. Also a person independent of cash collection and the bank reconciliations post cash receipts and collections to the general ledger. We would suggest that the mayor, town councilperson, download the bank statements and also review the bank reconciliations each month. The second item is we suggest that the financial officer, ten courses offered by the school of government and local government commission with the ultimate goal of eventually becoming a certified finance officer. There was significant improvement in the adjusting entries this year, and I was very pleased to see that. I didn't have nearly the number of adjusting entries. Well, I had close to the number, but the difficulty of auditing was not used hard because of the cleaning up the general ledger so much. The other letter is the governance letter. And I think the main point in that is on the second page, the second paragraph, for the purpose of this letter, we're pleased to report that no disagreements arose during the course of our audit with management. That's all I had in this, there's some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Do we have any questions?
I think I do, but Mr. Rouse may have touched on it. So if you would bear with me. Mr. Rouse, if I'm looking at page ten of the audit, you mentioned that the fund balance in the general, there was a four percent decrease, down to two point nine eight two million dollars. Then I go to page thirteen in the audit. And it lists the current assets, we'll just call that cash equivalents, at three point three five, six million dollars. I point that figure out because when you compare that number to last year, that's actually two hundred and eleven thousand dollars more in cash equivalents this year. So that's a six point seven percent increase while our fund balance decreased by four percent. So that...
Now, on the page thirteen, you're looking at governmental activities.
I'm looking at governmental activities.
And that includes the ARPA funds. When I was talking about the general fund, the general fund was down more. But the ARPA fund is separated, and a special revenue fund is separated from the general fund.
Okay. Well, I accept that, and, but I see as part of those cash equivalents, you have the ARPA money as part of the cash, but then there's an offset in liabilities for that same amount.
Yes.
Okay. When that money is spent, it won't negatively impact the...
No, that's when you'll credit the liability and recognize the revenue as the money is spent.
Okay. Are there any? Okay, okay, thank you. Do you mind, would you identify yourself for the record?
I am Judy Rouse, Rex's wife. I am a CPA in our practice.
Very good, very good.
One of the Rouses in the name, I got you. Excellent.
This is, this is, this is, well, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, I'd like to, I just want, you mentioned the land acquisition.
Yes, sir.
Some of the folks here may not be familiar with that. The town did, in the last fiscal year, purchase ten acres over here, adjacent to the town park, thus extending, increasing the size of the park by forty percent. You know, a great buy in my book. Had we not done that, from what you're saying, it appears our fund balance would have actually grown pretty significantly as a percentage of our total.
That's true, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Rouse, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussion? Mr. Rouse, thank you. Kim, thank you. And fellow council members, thank you. You're a bunch of tightwads. Got to be in the budget.
And Mr. Mayor, I think it's also appropriate to take a moment to thank the previous councils, going all the way back to the original council for setting such a high standard for fiscal responsibility that I hope future councils will live up to.
Absolutely, absolutely. They do, they do deserve commendation for all of this.
And Tim was on those previous councils.
Well, some of them.
But no, that's absolutely right. This town is unique in many, many ways, and future councils have set us and all the citizens up to be in a wonderful financial position. And so hats off, go to so many people there.
Yeah, I can't take any credit. At this point, all I can get is blame. So here we go. Mr. Reese Walker is our Metropolitan Planning Organization representative. Appreciate you being with us.
Drive safely, thank you very much.
Please, y'all be careful, thank you for coming.
Thank y'all for having me, mayor and council and Stokesdale citizens.
Welcome, Reese.
I'm glad to see how exciting y'all's audit is, just like ours. Glad I got to do two of those this year. I believe I emailed over a PowerPoint.
Mr. Walker, if you would, if you would identify yourself and the organization you're here representing on our behalf.
My name is Reese Walker. I'm on the Summerfield Town Council, and I am the area representative for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, for the area towns that would include Summerfield, Oak Ridge, Stokesdale, Sedalia, and Pleasant Garden. I believe the mayor and the mayor per Tim and I have played a little bit of phone tag trying to get me over here. There were a lot of questions about what the MPO was, what it did. I put together a pretty easy PowerPoint pretty quick. I emailed it to y'all. I don't know if y'all had an opportunity to look that over today or not, but we can run through it really quick. And I'm here to answer questions. If I know them, I'll answer them. If not, I'll get back to you, because there's always a chance I don't know the answer. So the MPO is the Greensboro Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. It manages the federal requirements for transportation planning process for area highways, transits, bicycles, and pedestrian facilities. So think about roads, greenways, anything, anything in that realm, includes sidewalks. The airport is also represented at MPO meetings, so they receive federal dollars, and they're managed through the MPO as well, since it's a transportation service. The Greensboro MPO, as I said earlier, includes the city of Greensboro, the majority of unincorporated Guilford County, the towns of Oak Ridge, Pleasant Garden, Sedalia, Stokesdale, and Summerfield. The MPO is responsible for coordinating transportation planning for federal, state, regional, and local entities. It's represented by professional staff, elected officials, and appointed representatives. One of the things that the MPO does is it's in charge of producing a lot of transportation plans. So, next slide, please. I'm getting ahead of myself. So here's a list of the plans that the MPO is in charge of and they produce. There are several other that aren't included. These are the ones that I think impact the towns more than anything else. A few other plans talk about busing and more regionally, regionally looked upon transit issues. So back to the airport and that kind of thing. Next slide. So one of the first plans, I think, that affects the small towns like Stokesdale would be the Metropolitan Transit Improvement Plan, or MTAP. The plan is federally administered, so the federal government basically says, if we're going to hand you money, you've got to have a written plan of how you're going to handle it. The MPO with this MTAP, they are in lockstep. So they write into it, hey, they're going to pave eight forty. And that's in that plan. The federal government will disperse the funds that season the plan. It's not only in Greensboro's plan, it's also in a state plan. So there's three or four plans that I'll have to concur. It's kind of how the federal government does checks and balances. I don't know how efficient it is, but that's the way it's been explained to me. That's one of their checks and balances, seeing these plans written out. We can go to the next slide, which is the twenty forty-five Metropolitan Transportation Plan. This plan's updated every five years. The last update was twenty-twenty. So the next update will be twenty-twenty-five, and then it'll be the twenty-fifty Metropolitan Area Plan. That's one of these things that just adapts as the world goes on. The plan looks about... The plan looks about, looks to future transportation needs. It makes recommendations for what those needs will be in the future. One thing that I think is, is kind of odd, and I guess you're kind of playing with the federal government, is a lot of these recommendations have no funding source attached to it. And in this plan, we see that a lot. So most recently, we just made it a change to the plan where it had a, a bridge going over eight forty. It was a really good idea to have that bridge there, but it cost twenty-nine million dollars and served twenty-eight houses. Well, it didn't make any sense, but it was on the plan, so we actually removed that recently. So that's just an example of where this plan, these, these plans don't always take practicality. It's this long range, well, maybe they'll build a bunch of houses over there, we need to service that area, let's look at it. That development didn't come like they thought it would, so these plans are updated at least every five years, and then as the need is, they get updated. So that is an example of a need. Next slide would be the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This is a plan of, this is a series of maps displaying long-term recommendations for highways, bicycle, and pedestrian, public transportation, passenger rail projects. It's different from the metropolitan plan. I don't know how, because it looks the exact same. I think it's another check and balance. This is, this is a mandated plan through North Carolina General Statute. They replaced a thoroughfare plan, and so that's how they, they're doing that. Next slide, which is the thoroughfare and collector street plan, which is still on the, the book. There's a link there. Stokesdale has a thoroughfare plan, and they all adopted it in January 22nd of 2008. I think Summerfield was right around that same time. The MPO basically published a map that said, hey, as you're planning communities, you're planning new developments, here's a collector street, here's a through-street plan. And the, the impact, or the idea of that was you would lessen the impact on already developed properties by having new developments, build roads, interconnectability, and that sort of thing, which, yes, sir?
I just wanted to read, Stokesdale adopted this plan in 2008.
If, if you want to click on that link, it'll be a map of the collector street planner, it should be.
It still has the bypass, this old, still has the bypass coming through here.
I believe it does.
A lot has changed since 08.
And I, I agree. I, I looked at Summerfield's and thought to myself, we might need to revisit that. I actually have a call into the Summerfield Planning Department about who, who initiated this plan. Was it the MPO or was it the, the locality, the town?
Right.
He's going to look into that for me, so... The way I remember it, and I was a little younger then, and I wasn't on town council, but the way I remember it was the MPO brought a recommendation, the towns accepted it. I don't know if anybody remembers any differently. But you can see, well, you can kind of sort of see, it's got these kind of imaginary lines drawn through, and, and I'm not super familiar with Stokesdale roads, but I'm going to give it a shot. Where Hardin Farm is, that is, what's the name of that road, somebody?
Mill Run.
Mill Run. You can see at the end of Mill Run, it's got us going across to the back of that neighborhood, and that's probably not realistic. I don't know what the terrain is there, but in this plan, it says, hey, if you have developments coming, you should have those folks build the roads for you. Again, I, I think this probably needs updating.
I hear what you're saying, looking ahead. I'm, I'm not so sure what's been done in Stokesdale as far for collector streets is really looking ahead, you know? Maybe not this organization, maybe the DOT. I'm so glad you're here, you know, just telling us about what, what you guys do and all that, and I might get to that, but, but I'll have a couple of questions, Reese.
I'll do the best I can. So, so here, this is really for your planning department, which I think is Guilford County, right? Guilford County. This is for Guilford County to help y'all implement. That's one of the reasons this was, this was put forward. So at that time, Summerfield was also using Guilford County for planning services. And so I think one of the reasons this was pushed forward by the MPO was so Guilford County staff, when a, when a rezoning came forward, they could say, hey, we want this, this through road, we want this, that, or another. I think one of the reasons it probably isn't been updated since 2008 is because county staff, at least at Summerfield, no longer do that, and county staff has probably had a major turnover, and I would venture to say maybe they aren't aware of it any longer. But if that's something that comes from MPO, hopefully I get an answer out of that from our staff. I can get back with y'all, and if it's an MPO thing we need to work on, I think it is. If not, it's a town thing, I think, I think y'all should propose something, and I'll work to put that in the MPO's improvement plan.
Please.
But we'll get an answer on who is actually responsible for that and, and what the mechanism is for updating. Any other questions there before we go forward? I'm sorry.
Excuse me for interrupting, Reese.
Okay. We'll go back to the slides. Slide eight, maybe, or 12, who knows? We'll just skip forward a few.
There, that's where we stopped off.
All right, we'll go to the next slide. So the Greensboro Urban Area Bicycle and Pedestrian Trails and Greenways, the BIPED Plan. This was the plan that really got Summerfield interested into it due to the greenway. Deana Barnes was our representative at the time, and she was able to secure funding an eighty-twenty match for a greenway, our greenway project in Summerfield. So they look at strategic locations for walking, bicycling, and trail needs. Greensboro, I didn't leave that, I took that bullet point out, but Greensboro has a, a lot of the control here, so their staff are the ones that actually work on these things, so therefore they get kind of first dib. So their plan is, is forefront at the BIPED Plan, but they've also included Oak Ridge's pedestrian plan and Pleasant Gardens Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. And I know recently, the first meeting I attended, I wasn't a voting member, but Pleasant Garden received some funds to help them implement their, their bicycle plan. I don't, I don't know the extent of that. Basically, there are two guiding bodies for the MPO, and we can go to the next slide for the rest of that. The first guiding body is the Transportation Advisory Committee, or the TAC. The TAC is a, is the Metropolitan Planning Organization's policy board and has a key role in making decisions about public investments for transportation services, infrastructure, and planning within the region. The TAC is made up of elected officials from the member units of government. Next slide. So on the TAC, you can see the list here, Mary Kay is a very nice lady, but I won't even try to say her last name. She is the chairwoman, Nancy Vaughn, the mayor of Greensboro, Yvonne Johnson, Tammy Thurman, Mike Fox, who is the NC Board of Transportation Board Chair, Carly Cook, who is a county commissioner member, Skip Austin, the chairman of the board, and Reese Walker, myself, Summerfield Town Council, representing area towns. Next slide. TAC meetings are open to the public. They occur two o'clock in the afternoon. They are held on Zoom or you can call in and listen. If you Google TAC or Greensboro Urban Planning, Greensboro MPO, the link is pretty readily available, and here is the schedule that is set for 2023. But I will add that it's subject to change, and it goes back to Greensboro's demands kind of call the shots. So if they can't, can't get there, they can't have a call, and they'll just move the meeting, and everybody kind of has to move with it, and that's, that is what it is. But so I wouldn't pencil that in for sure. I'd be there for willingness. The next slide, I think, might, might answer a handful of questions. So Michael Brandt, who was Summerfield's town manager at the time, advocated to the MPO that the area towns needed to have some level of representation at the TAC. Goes back on my memory, I believe his first ask was for a, a ex officia member, a non-voting member. The TAC actually reviewed the area populations for the towns and agreed that they should have a voice. They looked at what the unincorporated parts, the county had population-wise, looked at Greensboro had population-wise, and after the incorporations of Summerfield, Oak Ridge, and Stokesdale taken away from Guilford County's voice, they agreed, basically, that was the, the trigger, that these area towns should have representation. On the April 22nd, 2010, TAC meeting, they agreed, the verbiage is below, one member is to be selected from the town councils of Oak Ridge, Pleasant Garden, Sedalia, Summerfield, and Stokesdale. This member will represent the towns. The towns are responsible for selecting this member by caucus and maintaining communication with the representative about their individual and collective priorities. Next slide.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, sir.
If you would, would you back up and expand on that process a little bit about how you were selected?
I will. Actually, if we go to the next slide, that might help us.
Okay.
So representation on the TAC, so Summerfield was originally selected by caucus of the towns. I read the, I actually had the town manager send me the email threads when I was putting this PowerPoint together, going back to 2009, 10 of who it would be, and it was basically between Carly Strickland, who was Pleasant Gardens mayor, and Deana Barnes. At the time, the area councils selected one of those two representatives. They, they really didn't seem to have interest. Oak Ridge, Stokesdale's mayor at the time, Sedalia actually didn't respond at all until later on and said they were having to have representation, didn't care where it came from. So at that point in time, in 2010, 910, Summerfield was selected by the area towns to send a Summerfield sent Deana Barnes from 2010 until she retired from public service in 2019. After she retired, John O'Day was sent until he moved away from Summerfield and became ineligible because it is tied to your elected seat, and I've served since. So Summerfield's had the blessing of the local, local municipalities that are representative, so Summerfield's filled that seat as they see fit. Does that answer your question?
Only in part. Now, we, we didn't, my recollection is, we didn't have any say in continuing with Summerfield being the town of choice as far as providing a representative. So was there actually another caucus to put you in position?
There was not. Summerfield, I will, I will say this carefully, Summerfield assumed that the original deal was in place, that Summerfield would send representation. And after O'Day, I know that the town, I read the emails about O'Day, so basically, when O'Day was placed in Deana's spot, the towns of Oak Ridge, Stokesdale, Pleasant Garden all said, continue sending representation, we don't really care who it is.
Okay. And, and when will your, when will your term be up?
When the town kicks me off town council, which I, could be, could be tomorrow, who knows?
Okay, all right.
It, it is tied to your seat, so when you read the, the TAC bylaws, instead of trying to get muddy in, you know, our towns are in the off cycle based off Greensboro's, instead of trying to keep up with who's where, who's when, county commissioner seats are different, they basically said that your appointment is sent by whoever you are. So Guilford County appoints their two seats, Greensboro appoints their four, the state appoints their one. He's an appointed official, he's not an elected official. He, his appointment ends when he's fired. Same with Summerfield, so Summerfield sent me, my seat is tied to my, my election cycle.
But what are those bylaws you just referred to?
The TAC bylaws, they're found if you Google Greensboro MPO. You can look at what the MPO is, and you go to TAC bylaws. There's also TCC bylaws, and we'll talk a little bit about the TCC in the next slide, but we won't go there yet.
In your, I don't know that we ever would, but in your opinion, if Stokesdale, for say, wanted to request that we be allowed our own, very own, single representative representing the town of Stokesdale, this would, the process would be to contact the TAC board, and they would use their bylaws to make a determination as to whether or not we could have a representative, is that...
I don't believe they would use their bylaws. They would use their, their judgment, similarly, similarly to how they put one representative on for the area towns back in 2010. So, I mean, if this, this is an issue y'all want, and I actually would, would talk about a little bit in the TCC.
This is my fifth year, and I don't recall getting very much feedback from the MPO, the TAC, over these many years.
And honestly, you probably haven't.
And, or, excuse me, and are any solicitation for the town of Stokesdale's input from council members? So that, that's why I'm asking the questions.
No, and I, you know, it's hard, it's hard enough working with your own body, let alone working with, with seven others. So, so as the representative from Summerfield, I, I'm going to go to one or two contacts, probably one contact per town, and just hope that information is dispersed. I know that the mayor and I've had a few conversations, and the mayor pro tem and I have had a few conversations.
Make no mistake, we're grateful for you coming out on a rainy evening to...
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. The TAC, I, I believe Michael Brandt fought pretty hard to even get one seat. If it's something that Stokesdale wants, I'll, I'll champion the cause. I think that if they used a population basis, I think we have a, a really good argument that the area towns should have a second representative. The more research I did in putting this PowerPoint together, the more I really believe that, you know, if it's population-based, we've grown a lot in 10 years.
Right.
We, as the collective towns in Guilford County, if that's the number, if that's how they based it last time, I would argue that we still have that same argument to ask for a second seat.
And if they wouldn't want that, to add headcount numbers to the committee, maybe all those folks in Greensboro, you know, that are on it, might be interested in stepping down in favor of one of us.
I would, I would ask for that, but I don't think they, they would, and it goes back to they're dipping, they're dipping their hand in that, in that pot of money before it gets, I voted no to a handful of things that Greensboro voted for and Guilford County voted for. It's like, man, I'd like to have a little help here, but, I mean, so I, I would advocate for a second seat.
Well, to make the point for all parties concerned here, the town of Stokesdale is both blessed and has to contend with a, you know, a fairly large number of major highways passing through our town or adjacent there to, which I don't, you know, is a little different from the position some of the other towns in Guilford County are in.
I don't argue that.
That, that is something that we have to contend with fairly often here in this council chamber, one way or the other, about one issue or the other. So it's just something that has come up from time to time about where is our place on the MPO? Is there some things going on that we need to be concerned about, or has Summerfield got our back? And so we just need to be sure that we're, you know, have a line of communication, and, you know, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
And so...
I, I'll leave my business card with your clerk, and he can distribute that out, so you have a direct line to get in touch with me. I will say, as long as I'm here, I have your back for whatever, whatever you, you want me to champion. I'll go to bat for you.
Appreciate that.
I'm not going to promise I can deliver it. Like, I'm not going to promise I can deliver that seat, but I'll ask, because I do think based off population, there's an additional seat. I think it's y'all's idea, y'all should get first dib at it, I'd support that, too. Plus, I'd always rather it be one of my sister towns than Pleasant Garden or Sedalia. Let's not tell them that, but, I mean, y'all are, y'all are a sister town, just like Oak Ridge, we are kind of in it together. I would say that your best bet would be to, to advocate for TCC membership, which is the Technical Coordinating Committee. The Technical Coordinating Committee, they seem to be more accepting to allow membership there, so they allowed Oak Ridge to join that a handful of years ago. So Oak Ridge's planner attends those meetings. The TCC advises the TAC. So the TCC gets in the details, they get in the weeds, and they advise the TAC. The TAC is a, is that decision-making body, similar to you have a finance committee here, that'd be the TCC, y'all would be the TAC. That's kind of the way I would explain that. I think that there's really good, there's a really good possibility to get a seat there. I don't believe, I think it'd be a, a six to one vote, it may be a six to one vote for TAC. I'm just going to be honest, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, based off their...
Yeah, we're not surprised to hear that.
They, they don't want to lose that, and I, I understand that. If it were me, I probably wouldn't either. But I think two seats versus seven is still good odds. And you talked about asking Greensboro to roll off. When they added Summerfield's seat, they just added a seat. They have the ability to do that. So I think that would be more realistic than, than seeing Greensboro roll off.
Sure.
But if that's something y'all would like, I'm more than happy to, to ask and investigate into it.
Well, geographically, the three towns would, would basically take up a large chunk of northern Guilford County if you look at it from just a square mile perspective.
I agree.
What puts us, what, what puts us in that MPO?
That you're in Guilford County, and the federal government would be my answer.
High Point is in their own, correct?
They are.
They're in their own.
And Jamestown, and a little bit of unincorporated Guilford County. If I think real hard, they call that south of High Point, they call that a community.
Would it be possible to have our own MPO? For Summerfield, Oak Ridge, I mean, we're a big part of Guilford County.
Probably in theory, but when it came to competing for federal dollars, I don't know that any of us have the stomach of Summerfield, Oak Ridge, Stokesdale to put the staff on that Greensboro has. They probably have 12 or 15 people working full-time on MPO-related things. I'm not going to speak for my council, but we, we have a hard time hiring somebody as it is.
We're, we're...
And, I mean, just, we're talking about a major, a major expense to run an MPO. Now, granted, I think the federal government pays a large portion of their salary, but they don't pay all of it. So the city of Greensboro picks up the tab, which is another reason why they get an extra voting member and they get a little more say in how this program is implemented. And, and I think that's fair. They're paying the play. I, I get it. But I, I don't know if we collectively have the, the federal funds spent in our areas. And I don't, I don't argue that we have a lot of highways and byways in the three areas, but I don't, I don't know if we have enough. Wouldn't none of us have a DOT, a Department of Transportation? GDOT does a tremendous amount of work that the MPO directs, like the build bridge, the bridge building projects. Some of the eight forty stuff was done by GDOT, which surprised me. I thought NC DOT did all that, but they farmed some portions of that out to Greensboro's department.
I'll give you an example. Sometimes things just slip up on us. It's not, I don't think it's because of neglect, but back in the summer, you know, this town hall received a lot of questions, phone calls regarding a repaving project right through the middle of Stokesdale. And the town council didn't know, town staff didn't know, the town businesses didn't know, and it just kind of, everything turned out just fine.
I'll add one person to your list. Me, me didn't know either. So that's a DOT project, not an MPO project. And that's, that's where the, that's where the water's really muddy because everybody's playing ball together, but they're not always right-hand and left-hand telling each other what they're doing. It's government at work. I said it carefully.
MPO has nothing to do with the bypass that they're talking about in Stokesdale and then it got the project.
They, they will have, they will play a part of that, but they won't play a part in, in building it because it goes back to that's Greensboro's. We may, we may ask for federal dollars to be assigned to it, but we wouldn't, the MPO wouldn't actually execute that. DOT would execute it. Similar to the paving project, the MPO may have assigned funds last time they did the twenty forty-five plan. I'm gonna be honest, I didn't go back and read every, every bit of document they had. We just saw a brief overview of plans they had. It may have been in one of those plans, but once it's in that plan, the MPO doesn't say, okay, it's time to pave one fifty-eight. Sent the DOT and they go down the list and go, hey, we got money for this project, let's do it. We got money for this project, let's do it. It's in the MPO. So a, a future plan, let's say paving Angel Purdue Road may slip into the MPO's work, but it may not. It may be directly under DOT's purview. There's no, I don't, I don't totally understand how they decide what the MPO is involved in and how they don't. I think some of it goes back to where those funds come from. If it's a federal fund, the MPO deals with it. If it's a state fund, I think DOT handles it. That's the most I can get out of them that I understand. Because every now and again, it's a state fund that the MPO was involved in. But that's not always the case. So yeah, the, I, I think that the mayor pro tem and I rode around Stokesdale when that paving project was going on. That was rough. I couldn't imagine living through that. That was a lot. But the MPO was, at least under my tenure on the board, wasn't aware of it. Maybe done five years ago. But there was nothing that, I, I called John O'Day shortly after. He's, and he had a pretty, he had a really good attendance record, didn't miss one. He said they never talked about paving one fifty-eight Blues Creek Road, sixty-five, anything like that. The only thing that I've seen recently that affected Stokesdale was discussion about resurfacing sixty-eight, but they tabled it. Any other questions about that? We kinda got off.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Of course. So the TCC is the Technical Advising Committee that reviews the, reviews and gives guidance in coordination for the transportation planning processes. We'll go to the next slide. The area representatives are GDOT, Division Seven DOT, Greensboro Planning and Community Development, Guilford County Planning and Development, Guilford County Facilities, Parks and Properties, the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, and then the towns of Summerfield and Oak Ridge. And they both send planning representation or the manager. I believe Oak Ridge sends their planner and we send our manager. Next slide. Here's their meeting schedule. Again, starts at two. They meet virtually online. You can Google Greensboro MPO and you get a link. There's their schedule, but again, it's just like the, the TAC's based off Greensboro's schedule. It's subject to change. Next slide discusses the public comment. If anybody wants to call in facts, they've got a lot of hoops to jump through, so I thought I'd share that. Has to be done five o'clock the Tuesday before the meetings. I believe the meetings are on Wednesdays. You call in and tell them you wanna make public comments. You need to leave it in a message or they'll make arrangements for you to speak. It's a three-minute maximum for when folks speak. And then the next slide is for questions, which I think we answered a few, and then it's also a map of the MPO's district, which will show High Point, Jamestown, Sedalia, cut out of it. So that is the area that the Greensboro MPO is in, in charge of deciding how federal funds are spent.
So the area in green has six representatives?
I don't wanna misspeak. It has. City of Greensboro, council member, that's one. Mayor Nancy Vaughn, that's two. Yvonne Johnson is three. Tammy Thurman is four. So technically, the city of Greensboro has four representatives.
And who else is on there other than the?
Harley Cook and Skip Austin as county representatives.
So, so at least five.
Mike Fox is basically a transportation. He works for DOT.
He's chairman.
He's chairman of the, I'm gonna say it wrong, the NC Board of Transportation. He's a, he's a state employee. So they have four. Harley Cook is, her district is five. So she has parts of Summerfield and parts of Greensboro, a little bit of unincorporated part of the county, I believe. Skip Austin's district, I'm not familiar with, but I assume it's got a large portion of Greensboro. I don't think he'd stand a chance in a county election. So I'd say five securely and one of the six ones is working for Greensboro too. But I, but I think my direction is clear. Y'all, y'all feel that we should reevaluate, that we, that the TAC should reevaluate seat structure and, and look at reallocating based off new population data.
Why not? Well, if Stokesdale's gonna make a request, this council needs to discuss it. Somebody needs to make a motion. We need to vote on it. So we, you know, are all on the same page.
I'm here to do your pleasure. If y'all wanna talk about it in January, or if you wanna discuss it now, the, the first TAC meeting's January twenty-fifth. I'll need a little time to get things together to, to ask. And they may flat out tell me no, they don't wanna talk about it, but I'll need time to get things together. So if we can coordinate your desire and honestly what we should do, if, if this is the path we go down, we should go to Oak Ridge, Sedalia and Pleasant Garden because I think, and Summerfield, because I think that unified voice asking for an additional seat would speak louder than just one municipality saying, we want a seat. Would y'all agree with that?
Yeah, I, I for one would rather mow the matter over for the moment.
Well, I don't think we can take, we should take action tonight because it just has come up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I'm just saying personally, I wanna give this some thought. Reese, thank you.
Thank y'all.
I, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a, a lot of which you were talking about, eight forty and, and other projects, the twenty-nine million dollar bridge for twenty-eight houses. Those are pretty high-level projects. And I can think of some real small, micro projects, if you will, when compared to others that would really, in my opinion, benefit th- this town. How, how, how do we advocate for those smaller projects? You know, nowhere near twenty-nine million dollars, nowhere near two-point-nine million dollars.
I, I, I don't think I can tell you how to advocate because I can tell you what Summerfield's done that's been successful is, is, is our manager has built a great rapport with DOT. And when we have an issue like dangerous stoplight or a blind intersection or, you know, a handful of fatalities in intersection, the manager goes to DOT and goes, hey, we need to do this. And DOT, a lot of times can come forward and go, hey, we got eight million dollars, we can fix it. We got two-hundred thousand dollars. A great example would be on I seventy-three, there was no cutover for emergency access. The fire trucks would have to go from Oak Ridge Road all the way down to sixty-eight, do a U-turn and come back. And the wreck always was right at the bridge, but you don't go the wrong way on interstate. That's a great way to get somebody hurt. So the fire trucks have to go all the way down, do a U-turn and come back. We were having really extended response times. The manager sat down with DOT and said, hey, here's a problem we have. Let's get the fire chief in here. The fire chief came in, showed the numbers. DOT was able to find the money and put an emergency access on. So now halfway between sixty-eight and Oak Ridge Road is a turnaround. So now people can get speeding tickets on the road. We don't share that part, but I got a little blame for that and I'll take it. But it, it cut down emergency response.
Right.
So that's, that's a really good example. The MPO would never touch that project. That's not something the MPO's gonna look at, gonna entertain, gonna talk about. But having that staff-to-staff relationship proved to be super beneficial to Summerfield. So, you know, I don't know, I don't pretend to know Stokesdale's exact makeup. I know, I know your form of government's different than ours. I don't know if y'all have a, somebody you can really send to make that relationship with DOT. I don't know if it's a council member. But I think, I mean, the projects me and you rode and looked at, those are not MPO projects. Those are DOT projects. And DOT has funding for those things.
While, while we have you here, real briefly, one of our big problems, we've had NC DOT here is the, the intersection right up here at one fifty-eight and Angel Purdue as it relates to the school traffic and so forth. So if, if I personally had a wish list that somebody would step up the communication over, that would probably be it.
I know that Summerfield also has an issue with our elementary school and traffic. We, we work with DOT and the school system. DOT basically tells them they have the funds to fix it. They knew how to fix it, don't have the funds to do it. So we, we made a change with the elementary school with pickup and drop-off. So now it's a thirty-minute window instead of a, a ten-minute window, which has reduced cars sitting out into, to the major roads. And DOT basically was the heavy on that. I think they went to the school and said, hey, you can't have cars sit in the middle of a highway. You gotta do something. And that goes back to the manager. The manager handled that at the direction of staff or the direction of council. Manager, we got a problem. We have citizens coming to us and they're right. This is, this is ridiculous. You can't get through downtown Summerfield. It's not quite as downtown as y'all have, but you couldn't get past the fire station and that's a safety issue. And so staff was able to make that connection with DOT. DOT obviously did a study like they always do, brought back how they would fix it. Said they don't have the money to fix it, but it's on their list. So one day, I think they'll come forward and go, we got the money, we're ready to do it. And, and, and that's not a, it goes back to, I think that, you know, I think I was brought here because some of those, those projects y'all discussed, there was thought that it was the MPO doing that, or the MPO was your, your action to, to make that better.
It was more that, that you may have the knowledge of it and, and it wasn't being shared.
And that was, and I think that, that a few phone calls I shared with, with council members here, including yourself, mayor, was, hey, you know, do you know them? I do not. I do not know about it, but I'll, I'll look into it. And I think most of my questions, when I, when I did research into the problems here, were really DOT answers. They were never MPO answers. Division Seven's pretty good about communicating. And I went to the manager and told the manager to, hey, figure out that, figure that out. And my understanding was DOT reached out to y'all after that paving project. Was that not the case?
I didn't have any contact with DOT.
Okay. And, you know, in their defense, it's probably, probably hard to, to chase down council.
I, I don't think they, I, they didn't reach out to me, but, but even if they did, if they were to reach out after the fact, I mean.
It's too late.
Work's been done.
You can't unspill the glass of milk, right?
Yeah.
My understanding was they were to reach out to Stokesdale and, and discuss that. So in the future, because my, my ask was in the future, they know there's a major construction project coming to Stokesdale. Y'all are a great tool, just like we are, to educate citizens. Hey, this is coming. Be prepared.
As opposed to acting like idiots because we don't know what happened.
Oh, yeah. That's my favorite thing to do on Town Council.
Yeah.
I do it every chance I get.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree with you. But I understand, I am disappointed if DOT did not reach out. I'll, I'll reach back out to them.
Do we have anything else for Reese? Thank you so very much.
Thank y'all.
Very informative. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Beautiful town hall, great meeting, awesome audit. It was riveting. So I'm edging my seat the whole time.
Do you wanna tell him about the town hall?
Reese, would you mind sticking around in case any citizens, we're doing citizens' comments next. They might have something to add.
Yes, I would be more than happy to.
We do have some citizens' comments next. I don't have any, any indication as to who might want to speak, but if you will step up, identify yourself for the record. And you've got three minutes at least.
Awesome. Mayor, council. My name is Adam Delvo and I'm a seven-year resident here in Angels Glen. It actually dovetails something nicely that Reese was talking about. He's talking about representation for our town within funding that's coming from, whether it's federal funds. And it dovetails nicely into two topics that we had on the agenda. If I'm premature and out of place, tell me and I'll sit down and talk about this after we get through new business. But one of the topics that we've been talking a lot about has been the road issue here on Angel Purdue Road. And even as it, you know, comes up to the school area. I don't know that we've done a great job of doing proactive planning and we're talking about projects that are out into twenty forty-five. There's some simple things that are very frugal, council has, has done that we are not able to spend on. If we take a field trip outside and we look left and right coming out of here, there's literally no lighting to enjoy this beautiful park. There's no sidewalk for safety for families to come walking down and enjoy the park. And having been a resident in Angels Glen, it's a very, very challenging place for us to, to be. Particularly walking the dogs or taking the kids to the park, it does become an issue. So as we expand in this area, I'd love for us to have some representation, whether it be with the TCC or TAC. TCC? Easier to get with? Alright. I'm just dropping acronyms, my friend. But what I would, what I would encourage is that we find a way to have our voices heard because we are a smaller government and we don't always have the funding, but there are some things that we could do a better job of as we expand and add a hundred and forty houses down the road where we can look and say, this road simply isn't wide enough for current safety, let alone adding a hundred and forty houses down the road. So I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else? We have a public hearing. Consideration and adoption of an, of an ordinance closing a portion of Angel Purdue Road. Meets and bounds, description and map attached. This has already been done, folks. I don't know if you all are aware of it, but this is a formality. The, the section that they're talking about is, is the entrance to what will be the hundred and forty homes in the, in the new area, Blacksmith. You have anything additional?
I don't. I guess normally in a public hearing, for an instance like this, the Guilford County Planner would be here to present this. That doesn't appear to be the case. We certainly wanna give anybody an opportunity to speak in favor or against. If anybody is here that has questions to exactly what we're voting on tonight, would like to see a map, I don't know if y'all have one with you. We can certainly share that with anybody here. Just please step up.
Again, this has already been done. This has already been voted on. The planner is trying to clear up the paperwork. That's the bottom line. But it, but we do have a new planner, so that's, that's about.
There were some concerns tha- that I've heard that this would shut off the access to Adano Road out here and by extension, people that live in the landing in Angels Glen or, or in that area would have to cut through Angels Glen off of Angel Purdue Road. And that's not the case. This, this is correcting the maps down at the old farm with the new roads, so.
They're just realigning it. They took a dog leg and they straightened it out. That's what they did.
Yeah. But as part of any public hearing, we wanna offer anybody the opportunity to speak in favor, also against. So, so if anybody would like to speak in favor of this.
Mayor, on behalf of the Fire Department, could we ask after this vote's done, if we get a copy of that map?
Absolutely.
Randy, it's, 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 I like, this is a non-event. I mean, it's. Yeah, okay. Is there anything to vote on here, Mr. Foy? It's my understanding, we've already approved this.
I don't think we'd be talking about it if we'd have approved it.
I make a motion that we adopt this. There you go.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think maybe appropriate to uh close, if you've opened the public hearing. I think there, there needs to be a motion to close the public hearing before you take any action.
Alright, sir.
I, I'll motion that we close the public hearing portion.
I'll second it. Jim? Mr. Foy?
To clarify, everybody has spoken either online or that's here. Or, or everybody has had an opportunity and wishes not to speak, I should say.
Yeah, correct. Nobody said anything online either.
Okay, then I'm aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. I make a motion that we adopt the uh, uh ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, there was a slight amendment to the, there was typographical errors in the one that was circulated yesterday that I think had been, I think has been circulated to council members.
Yep, yep. You should have a fresh, hard copy in your packet. It's a, it's an attachment. It's not in the original packet. And it's the, the meets and bounds. Um uh I think it stretches. Yeah, second and third pages. And um, like he said, it's just where he caught some typographical errors and fixed them and we've added the map as well.
I withdraw my motion. I will uh make another motion to adopt the ordinances with the amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll second that motion provided we further identified as ordinance number zero dash two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance in order to close a portion of Angel Purdue Road.
That, that will change. Uh it's good practice. Ms. Martin usually leaves the, that portion after twenty twenty-two empty until it's adopted and signed.
Mr. Winfrey, is that sufficient to identify the action we're taking?
I think the, you've got the amended motion, so I would, I think just saying the motion that's been circulated to the, to the council members would be sufficient. Sufficiently specific to identify.
And just, it's worth mentioning, I guess. If the planner was here tonight to present this, the, the question I would ask him is why are we doing this three months after the roads have already been installed? Instead of ahead of time, but.
Well, I think that the issue was that the, the old right of way uh was impeding on their development. They couldn't put any improvements in the old right of way. So they're getting rid of the old right of way that was on record.
A- a- absolutely. And they've done it. The roads are paved and everything, so. What if we vote no?
Developers gonna love that.
I'm, I'm like the mayor. I thought we covered this, but I, I guess if we need, we discover we need any remedial action, somebody elect this council, no.
Did anybody second your motion, Mike?
I did, provided we identified.
I accept the, I accept that amendment. Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. We have a, we have a twenty twenty-three meeting calendar. I make a motion that we adopt a calendar. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Old business, town park.
Well, I want to piggyback off, it's been a month now, but you know, T Stevenson of the Park Improvement Pen Committee did a great presentation of the what the committee has discussed in terms of improvement to, uh the improvements to town park. Items discussed were a, a basketball court, uh new playground equipment, an amphitheater and walk-in trails. And in one of his slides, he uh, he showed that, you know, tho- those were all items from a survey, albeit the survey was two years ago. All items that were favorable in the survey that the citizens uh wanted to see. So you, personally, I'm excited about all four, the possibility about all four items coming to fruition. And in the last committee meeting, we did discuss one thing, and I think it's a great idea and all the credit goes to Jimmy for it. That we, we should have a public forum, not a public hearing or say, but call it a public forum out there to, to, to do a, you know, a more detailed presentation, a PowerPoint slideshow. And just anybody that wants to come and give their input on it, and this is how town money could potentially be spent, this is what you would get in return. Uh it'd be great to hear from, from anybody. Uh citizens' comments are always valuable. When I start talking about, uh when we talk about the water system capital improvements and a couple bullet, a couple items from now. I'll talk about how uh citizen comment was valuable to me personally about the water system. But uh I, I think we owe this to our citizens and I would like to see this public forum occur before the January town council meeting. So I would like to suggest uh, or ask for council's vote to have a public forum to present what the town park improvement committee has discussed in terms of town park improvements. I'd like to have this on Thursday, January the fifth at seven P M. And I think, did I word that in a motion? Cause if, if I didn't, I meant to.
I've got it as a motion.
Public, public hearing?
It's a public forum.
Forum.
Public forum.
Okay, for clarification, a, a quorum of the town council will not be present and it will not be a council meeting.
No, I believe that it should be.
Excuse me?
I believe that it should be.
Yeah, council needs to be there. I mean, it's.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to track with you here.
No.
So, so in, in effect, it will be a special town council meeting. It would have to be under the law. And then the purpose would be to present, you know, use a forum format to present this.
Yes, sir.
These plans.
Exactly. Yes, sir. That's it.
I'll second the motion.
Would it require um notice, notice and notification similar to a public hearing such as um
Thursday?
Uh newspapers, et cetera? Cause I know that's very specific.
Are you, Mr. Foy, you sure you want to do this that week? That tends to pretty much be the, the last week of the holidays. And a lot of people are coming and going, cold weather. I, I just, just asking.
Yeah, well, I mean, if that's the first one, that'll be the first of how many we need to have, but.
It's the.
It's January fifth, so certainly it's.
It's the end of that week.
I believe that's a Thursday.
It is.
I mean, we won't be making any decisions. It's just kind of.
No, we're just.
Just, I mean, and nothing's set in stone.
Citizens have given their input via one avenue and that avenue was, was a, a survey from a few years ago.
Yeah, I, I just know from experienced people, you know, tend to be obligated that week. That's all I'm saying. Doesn't matter to me.
Well, this may be just one of the first ones we do. I mean.
It could be.
Well, we don't, you know, like I said, we, we don't set anything in stone. Council eventually does that. And um it's just an opportunity for the public to see and if anybody wants to jump up and down and, you know.
Or has a better idea.
We're spending citizens' money, so they got it, they, they got a, they. I don't want it to be like it's been sometimes uh when you show up and they say, well, you're two years late. We've had that before. So every opportunity we can, we need to put it out. I mean, I know we have open meetings all the time.
But this is just another opportunity to, to put out what, what's being looked at.
Briefly, in response to Mr. Rigsby's question, I think if you contemplate a quorum of the town council being present and considering information from the public, then we need, you'd give notice to the public that it's going to be held.
I just got a, Ms. Martin is listening from home as well. And so she just said forty-eight hour notice required is normal. No newspaper required unless they want it published. And so I guess is, is the method to go, is a special called meeting and then just have uh basically an agenda item is the forum? Is that right?
Yeah, the agenda item, public forum to discuss or to review town park improvement.
Gotcha.
Ideas or, or, or whatever. And then of course. Yeah, Facebook, sunshine list, everything we can do to communicate it and.
Absolutely.
Of course, uh, you know, hopefully the Northwest Observer can, can help us out there. We'd like to get the word out to as many folks as possible.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Uh the consideration uh of the certification of municipal declaration to um to change the speed limit on Angel Purdue, that's going to be moved to January because of some information we do not have at this point. Discussion of the water system, capital improvements. Mr. Foy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did add this. Uh in, in the last meeting, we, we, we uh, we gave a lot of oxygen and spoke to the uh potential extension of the water system down Coldwater Road, uh Highway sixty-five and then connecting to uh, connecting to Oak Level Church Road. We had a citizen comment, Mr. Dalton, he's, he's here now about uh, he, he, he shared that he'd like to see council look, you know, at Anthony Road and Happy Hill Road as well. So you, I, the following day, I, I personally just drove down Happy Hill Road and then Warner Road and Hall River Road and, and in my opinion, that's a, that's a good option as well in terms of uh extending water down there and fully loop the system. We had a special called meeting, uh I believe it was last week, where we talked, talked about that more in full. So you, you know, if we look at where we're at now, we've kind of got two, two al- alternatives unless another one is suggested. We haven't made any decisions yet. Uh but given those two alternatives of a, a cold, a cold water, uh Blues Creek Road and Oak Level Church Loop. Also, the second alternative, Happy Hill, which uh, the Happy Hill to Warner Road to Hall River Road and looping the system there. So we have two alternatives. Uh I think now would be a good time to have Hazen and Sawyer use their hydraulic model for both of these alternatives and uh see what the output is of that model uh in terms of the, the entire system. We did pay to have access to this model. However, for them to do the modeling and submit a formal report to council, uh that would cost twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh I have shared, this is late, so it wasn't in the packet, but there's a Hazen and Sawyer document of this modeling. Where the scope of the work is where they would look at the hydraulic performance uh and, and the increase in available fire flows. Water quality impact using water rages as an indicator and resiliency and redundancy impacts to the water system. And the deliverable would be a summary, a summary of the results, a high level cost estimate and our recommendation and a technical memorandum. Uh and will include one presentation by the project manager at a scheduled council meeting once the analysis is complete. The service would be provided to the town at twenty-five hundred dollars. So given where we are in the, in the planning process, uh and I would like to, like to make a motion that we approve the Hazen and Sawyer uh submittal dated December seventh, twenty twenty-two to run the uh, run the models for the two options, either the Happy Hill Loop or the Coldwater, Coldwater Loop, uh and the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Mr. Landrith?
You're a second.
Well, yeah, I'll second it. I mean, for discussion.
I think he's already discussed.
Yep.
So this is for both, this is for both routes?
It is, it is. And you know, they would, we would see the results from the system.
The money, um you know, we're trying to get the grant. Would this be, we get the grant, we'll be able to get it from this? I mean, we're going to have to do it.
Can we use the funds that we, the grant money funds we've applied for to pay for this engineering proposal? The twenty-five hundred dollars, I think is our question.
In my opinion, we can use the grant monies we've been granted. And I don't know if this could be used for the four hundred thousand dollar grant we've been, we've applied for. I don't think we'll know the result of if we got that or not until likely February, maybe even March.
Mr. Foy? I, I, I feel like I don't have enough information to fairly evaluate this in terms of uh the whole, the tot- totality of the project. But I, I'd like to make this point. Before we started considering this, there was a developer that was intending on extending, paying to extend the town of Stokesdale water main from one fifty-eight to a project on Happy Hill Road. This previous council voted to approve, to allow this extension down Happy Hill Road and over into Forsyth County. Do we have any idea how we're, this, this is impacting that project? Are we in effect providing a, an improvement to this area or this developer in the absence of, of any assessment? My good friend and colleague Jimmy Landrith pointed out to me the other day that no matter what we did here, that, that we would be improving someone's property. And while someone else wouldn't receive that improvement. And so I have pondered and pondered how we best, best handle this. And I'm, I'm wondering if we need to get uh legal and our professional advice on the matter before we get too far in it. I, I don't think twenty-five hundred dollars is, in the total scheme of things, uh any significant amount of money. I, I think this is a very reasonable proposal and I, I, and I think both routes, uh you know, we need this information you're proposing. But are we, are, are, you know, are we taking into account how we're affecting that project?
The project, you, you, the first project you're talking about, the project you're talking about is Happy Hill Road and the developer extending the water line to service.
Yeah, we, we were in effect already.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask my question.
We were on task to get that water main, what I'll call quote unquote, for free. Now we're going to be spending town of Stokesdale money.
Why do you think we would be doing that?
Uh pardon.
What do you mean? Are you talking about the town of Stokesdale spending money to extend a water line that the developer is planning to extend?
Well, well, if I was this developer, I'd certainly be uh sending Christmas cards to this council. But I, I'm just kind of trying to understand if we have any duty to, any consistency duty here to the rest of the town. How, how do we handle this so that there's even, not even an appearance of any favoritism is, is my.
Well, I mean, I, one, we haven't made a, the decision on what we're going to do. I think part of this is getting a professional running the model, getting a kind of a professional report from an engineer on saying this is, of these two options, this is what the results would be. Uh and certainly that can be used as a tool to ultimately decide on what, what option is taken. I mean, the developer is going to extend that water somewhere between two thousand and three thousand feet down Happy Hill off of one fifty-eight.
So we're, we're only.
If he wants to get water.
We're only considered doing this from, from that point to the south down Happy Hill Road then. After, after that development since, uh after that water main is extended by, by the developer. I, I just think this worth mentioning, just in the interest of transparency and just, just so that, that we're all on the. I, I just want to bring my concern to council. I don't know exactly what to do about it.
Well, what is your primary concern?
Well, again, I, I guess I'm echoing the point that Mr. Landrith made to me in a personal conversation. We just happened to, happened to be talking about the town's water system and the, and these extensions.
Well, yeah, you know, I, I don't like extending, I, I like the way that we did. The developers were extending our water lines. And the town wasn't paying and we'd, we'd pick it up and we'd take them over. You know. But we didn't have funds that we've got to, uh we have to use them and give them back.
Yeah, yeah.
So this, I, I, the way I look at this is that we're trying to find what the best route to be, you know, what are we concerned about? We're concerned about water quality and we're concerned if we have a pipe break. We're concerned about pressures on fire hazards. So I mean, I guess this, I mean, this is part of what we're going to have to look at, to be fair, in my eyes. But yeah, like I said, I, I'm not a, I mean, I'm glad we got the money, but it's, you know, we are, I, 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 I don't know legally. That, that'd be for attorney, where you're picking winners and losers. I mean, you got to have a reason you go a certain way. You can't, I mean, if it, if it shows that this ways uh better for the, the goals that we have and then we go another way, I mean, we better be able to, be able to answer it and we can't. I can't answer it. You might be able to, but I can't.
Well, Mr. Foy, it was just a point I wanted to make. I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm ready to vote, but I just, I just thought that I needed to mention that let council be, be aware of my concern.
Does anyone have any idea when the developer is doing their extension? Does anyone have any idea when the developer is going to do their extension?
I, I had a citizen call. Now, I can't even keep up how many days it's been, weeks. I was talking about that they were probably coming back to us, and this is unofficial. It's just, and, and wanting to go further than, than they said they were going to go. I forget what the piece of property is that they were going to. That, that could be, that, they, they were at a meeting in Forsyth County and, and trying to switch some things up, and that's, that's all I know. I don't, I haven't seen a meeting in Forsyth. There may not be anything to that, but that is a possibility that.
Miss, miss.
They're coming back.
Mr. Foy, forgive me, I was making some other notes here. You did identify this proposal by date and the amount in your motion, correct?
Just for you, my friend.
Thank you.
Correct, he did.
But this will be a study that if we're going to put water lines in, and if these are the routes, I mean, is there other routes that, that we're considering that, you know, we, we didn't get to, we didn't really have much input on the first study. We might have set some of these routes in, I mean.
Well, I hope I didn't.
Thing I know of it working on right now.
Well, Mr. Landrith, I hope I didn't jump the gun on it. Maybe it's something you wanted to mention yourself, but I just thought the point you made to be in that conversation was spot on.
Well, still, you know, we, you know, we are putting water lines on people's property. It does increase it, and, you know, who's to say, you know, we, we do this property, and then you got people over here, and, you know, they want a water line to increase the value of their property. So, you do get into that. And, and I can see, because it's all taxpayer money.
I think the question really is, are we, are we going to do the developer's work? That's what it, that's what it boils down to.
No, I don't think that's, that's already been voted on by council, so that's a, a similar point.
Okay, so the developer doesn't do the, doesn't do the extension?
No, he does do the extension. We just will simply pick up these routes at the end of the extension.
We've granted him permission to do the extension. I don't know if he's obligated to continue to do the extension at any point.
Right, if he, if he does not want to build that development, certainly.
He or she.
Or whoever it is. If they, if they decide not to do the development, then they won't do the extension. If they want to do that development, they're going to do the extension.
Now, that is going to be a, a point. When are they going to do it? And is it going to be a year? Is it going to be two years?
They don't have the same time constraints we have.
That's, they're, they're trying to make money. They're, they're going to run that water line. That's going to be the first thing they have to do.
Yeah, maybe.
I, I would like to get the attorney's. I, I personally do not believe that enhancing, by running a water line, I mean, we're enhancing our system. I don't think there's any integrity issues with us enhancing, you know, our system as, and a byproduct. It may or may not enhance somebody's property. You know, we've still got to do the engineering studies to see, to see, A, can we, can we cross all of those properties, you know, to make sure there's no, and then there's some other issues there, you know, bedrock, mineral rights, there's all kinds of things that could come into place. I don't, I wouldn't, wouldn't make a blanket statement that just because we're running a water line enhances somebody's property. And then, you know, they may not want the property dug on, you know. We'd have to actually look at the property. If they've got something up close to the right of way, you know, it's going to have to come down. So, there's a lot of factors that go into, I wouldn't make a blanket, blanket statement that just because we choose to run a water line across somebody's property, that it would enhance it.
It does.
Even not if they never intend to, not if they never intend to hook onto it. But I don't think that's the intent, the intent of the council is to enhance anyone's property. I think our intent is to enhance the overall town's water system. And, and I think as long as we stay with that intent, I think, without any proof otherwise, I think ethically, we're okay. But like, I mean, I certainly welcome the attorney's opinion on that as well.
That's, that's pretty much what I said, that, you know, we were going by studies of what our goals were for our water system. You know, we're, we're trying to, our water quality, to help our water quality by having loops and our pressures, and. Go ahead.
Well, I'd, I'd tell my age here almost, but it seems like I've been in this town hall for forever. In, in my previous term, we were cautioned from time to time by more than one attorney about the, the need for consistency in managing our water system and, and the mains and taps provided. And that, in part, Mr. Rigsby's where I'm coming from also. You know, as a layman, obviously, I'm no technical expert to state the obvious.
Are you saying we shouldn't do the study?
My, my motion is to, to have an expert run the scenarios, so we have data to make a decision off of.
So, I would, if I may, I could pose my question back to the attorney was, you know, is data and the intent to improve the system enough to, to keep us above board? Or, I mean, should, should we even be considering personal gain or, or, you know, if there's no, there's no proof of anybody's trying to prove, improve anybody's personal property anyway, is that a liability for the council to worry about at this point?
Well, as I understand, the motion that's on the floor is to spend twenty-five hundred dollars to have a study done to compare two different loops, is I understand. The Happy Hill Loop and I forget the other loop that we're talking about. And assuming that there's money in the budget for that, I'm assuming if there, if there's money in the budget for that, there's certainly nothing wrong with the council studying these two loops to figure out which, which, if any of them are desirable or preferable. And as long as you're, as far as this more remote issue of is somebody benefiting from the water, the water lines going in, I think that's, I think most realtors you talk to will say, yes, it does improve everybody's, you've got the potential to sell it for more. But as long as the council is basing their decision on solid engineering studies, that, that would be to benefit the council and may protect the council from some accusation that it's not being above board. So, I would think an engineering study that shows the benefits of these two alternate loops, I think would, would be the benefit of the council.
Is there any further discussion?
Ms. Finance Officer, we do have the money in the budget, correct, for the study?
Where I'm going, that would go under engineering, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. I guess. It's also, we have one-point-one million dollars in the grant budget for expenditure from the state.
That was my next question where it was coming, you know, where, because if it's going to come out of the expenses, item number twelve thousand three, we might need to do a budget amendment, but if it's going to come out of the, okay.
And I haven't examined that grant to see if it, if it, I don't know that it can be used for that purpose. I'm assuming it can, but I don't know that to be the case.
I mean, to do any kind of water, water system, we'll need engineering support, and that would fall under that.
Yes, it falls under that, yes.
It does, okay, okay.
Yes.
You want to amend amendment to take the money out of that and then go with it, or we need to do that?
No, we would not have to do an amendment if we're going to take it out of that, yeah, it's out of the grant.
All right, good enough.
Any further discussion?
I don't have anything.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. This is continued discussion and consideration of Hallwell and Plumbing estimate for the Waterford Model sixty-seven wall faucet, Woodford Model R thirty-four two-inch bury, two-inch bury locking yard hydrant, two-hour labor for drinking fountain, continued from November. I'd like to say I think the only thing we really need down there right now is probably the remote faucet that was planned closest to the shelter. I'm not so sure. We actually need the faucet on the building itself based on the placement. They're placing the faucet on the front of the concession stand, the one that was proposed for the, Tim, help me out, what's the, what's the, the remote called?
Yard hydrant.
Yard hydrant.
Yeah.
That should be more than sufficient to take care of, take care of my concerns as far as it would give us an opportunity to rinse down the shelter if we had to, or to give us an opportunity to provide irrigation wherever we had to. It's just a matter of providing water hoses. My biggest concern when we, when, my biggest concern with where we are is having to open that concession stand door and leave it open to provide water as we had to not too long ago, just for irrigation. Is that a motion, Mr. Mayor? No, just, that's just discussion right now. I'll be glad to make it a motion. I make a motion that we just do the yard hydrant, that we do not do the, the building faucet. I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor, if you'll accept an amendment to further identify. That would be that we approve item number two on the email quote that we received from Hall Plumbing on November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the Woodford Model R thirty-four two-foot bury locking fire hydrant for the estimated price of thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Since it says estimated price, I'm a little nervous. I, I'm going to say for, for not to exceed fourteen-hundred dollars. I accept the amendment. Any, any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Consideration of renewal health insurance plan for full-time town employees, of which we have two. I've looked through this thing, and I'll reiterate, I hate insurance. Does staff has a, have a presentation on this item?
Well, I can speak on it. Mrs. Hunsucker is, has much more insurance background than I do. She used to work for an insurance company, and so I kind of let her head this up and just discussed it with her. But the two proposals that we have are, one is Mr. Devon Brown presented to us. It's Friday Health Plans of North Carolina. And judging from his email, you know, we, you know, there's a table that looks like most of these insurance companies go by, and it tells you what your individual plan will cover, deductible for different types of care, your prescription medication. And, and just my, my experience with this, it looks like this Friday Health Plan seems like a decent enough plan. It looks like it's much cheaper. Total cost of this Friday Health would come out to two-seventeen and two-eighty-seven, roughly five hundred dollars, compared to thirteen-hundred for the Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Saving the town roughly eight hundred dollars.
A month?
A month, correct, yes. Eight hundred dollars per month. And it's, Pris is, we, I'm trying to think of a good way to word it. The way that it was explained to me was basically this health plan through Friday is, it's based on our age, and then, which Blue Cross and Blue Shield is as well. However, this one is also based off of income, and therefore, the government is able to supplement certain amounts of this for reasons of income. And so, that was my understanding of how the price was so good, because when I saw the eight hundred dollar a month price savings, I thought it was almost too good to be true. And I still don't know that it's not. I'm not a insurance expert by any means. But it does seem to be cheaper. The deductible, when speaking with Pris over the, the table, the items look better. They look good, and, and the, the cost itself looks good. And she did speak with her primary care physician, and they gave good remarks to the insurance company. I did the same, and, and my doctor spoke highly of the insurance company as well, said that it's new, that they have not had any issues with coverage, and the patients seem to be satisfied. So, that would, I, I guess if, as far as a recommendation, it would be that. But I do want to remind everyone that whatever you all decide, just let me know, because Nathan Jones, who is a, currently has us covered under Blue Cross and Blue Shield, needs a decision by the tenth of this month. So, I would email him as soon as possible with the decision. And then, Mr. Brown with Friday would need one by the fifteenth.
I will add that I did receive an email from our current insurance, Monica Jones, and was informed that the current insurance that we have is going up ten percent.
What's our current rate?
Right now, we are, bear with me one second, sixteen? No.
That's the.
That's the, hold on. Which one do you have now? This one?
We have the silver right, that's the.
Yeah, this.
That's the gold, we have the silver right now.
This one.
No, sorry, go back. It's a very good stage. And that is what it would be if we renewed it. That's the renewal rate? And so, I'm not sure.
It's, it's pretty much around, it's, it's not much different than that now, yeah. It's around, it's still around thirteen hundred now, yeah. It's not much different than that.
Can I ask a question, Robbie?
Yes, sir.
On the, the tax credit, is that something that each of you will have to, like, file for? Or will you have to pay the full amount out of pocket and file for reimbursement on that?
I'm not sure. I know, Mr. Foy, we, we discussed that earlier. Did you happen to bring that up to Mrs. Hunsucker?
No.
No, I don't have an answer for that. I, I didn't notice that until speaking with Mr. Foy about it earlier, so I'm not sure, as far as the tax credit.
Surely, it's a subsidy to the insurance provider, I would think, but not knowing either.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that is a tax credit that you would receive at the end of the year? Or is that a credit, you know, like the, the market insurance credit that's received at the end of the year? Or is that, because you did say it was based on income.
Correct.
And the marketplace, I know that if you get insurance at the marketplace, if they supplement more than what they should have throughout the year, then you have to pay a certain amount back at the end of the year through your tax return. But if they did not pay enough, then you receive a tax credit at the end of the year. So, I'm wondering, did you, you said you did not speak with Pris on that, Derek? On the tax credit, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't done much speaking about this.
Okay. I would wonder what that was. I mean, it's not my decision, but I'm saying.
Mr. Foy?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to guess you're the one that's most familiar with this information. As presented, it's difficult for me to compare the cost of one with the other and derive how I might vote. Can you shed any light on this?
Yeah, I'll run, I'll run the numbers. For the Friday plan, each employee would be responsible for two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents a month, or that's what the cost for each employee would be for the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan.
What I'm kind of interested in is that your budget cost one plan versus the other is, is what, what I would like to see an analysis of for, for me to vote on.
Can I, while you're thinking on that, can I just advise something on my previous question? It says premium subsidies, this is on their website, premium subsidies, also known as advanced premium tax credits. The amount you receive is based on your income and the size of your family. You can either use the subsidy to lower your monthly payment, or you can claim the credit when you file your taxes.
And as I was stating, as a tax accountant, that's exactly what I was talking about. They would get the credit, the subsidy would be paid through the premium monthly. And if the. And if the, uh, government paid too much, they would owe the money back at the end of the year through their tax return. Otherwise, if they, if they did not pay enough by their, uh, income, I mean by their income, they would receive the premium tax credit at the end of the year through their refund, I mean through their tax return. Yep.
If that comes back out, will we distribute that back to the town?
Mr. Ford, can you give us a, a comparison in, in price?
Mr. Mayor, this is not my agenda item, so, but I'll hap- be happy to, I think I was interrupted when I was doing that earlier. But the price is two hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents for Friday health plan. And per employee, and it looks like with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the price would be six hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-nine cents per employee.
If coverage is-
Both, both options would be in the budget, Tim.
If coverage is, is comparable, it's a no-brainer. I'm, I'm all for saving the employees as much money as we can.
Let me, let me just, just make sure I'm not overlooking this. Looking at this premium, this is the premium that each employee would, would, according to them, would be paying and it would have to be based on their taxes. So, uh, looking at Friday's plans, it doesn't look like the town would be responsible for paying anything.
No.
For, for the health insurance. Am I not, I'm not, am I reading that right?
Well.
Where the other side would be paying the six hundred and some dollars and you'd be, so I'm, I'm just-
Kim, what does the town pay now per employee?
Uh, seven hundred per employee, per month, so fourteen hundred dollars.
What is, Robbie, what do you pay a month?
They pay fifty-seven thirty-seven each pay period.
Sounds right.
It's what, it's what comes out of their check each pay period, fifty-seven thirty-seven.
So the complication that I see is, based on this, it sounds like his would go up to two seventeen a month. Unless we subsidize it.
It would be averaged out. So ju- just because Robbie's younger, it, that's why his would be two seventeen, but it, we, we would average out the cost per employee. That's just, that's just the way that works.
Their premium would be the same, because the town would take care of the rest, just like it is now. Their premium's the same now.
But would that affect their tax credit situation?
I would.
No.
No. I, I guess my question would be, and this is just, how would that be at the end of the year if they received a premium credit back at the end of the year? Would they owe that back to the town or? How's that gonna work? Is my question. If the town's paying a premium for them, if the town's paying the premium for them and then they receive a premium tax credit at the end of the year back? I mean, how? They would need to pay that back to the town, in my opinion, but I, it's town's-
Yeah, I mean, this sounds too good to be true. Uh, and, and I know some background calls were made and all that. You know, several red flags here. Uh, one, the gentleman, I guess, trying to sell this is emailing staff from a Yahoo account, uh, so.
Hey, don't, don't mock that.
Well, I am. Uh, but, yeah, y- yeah. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I won't be voting for the Friday plan. It's just, uh, something doesn't sit right with me. I do love the cost savings, though.
Absolutely, but.
I am more, and I'm more concerned on the Priscilla side. Her, the seven hundred and seventy-five credit per month could add up substantially and, and it could cause a, a problem on her, on her taxes or-
I have no idea what any of that means.
Yeah, and I, I'd hate to, to put either employee in that situation.
That's the subsidy she would receive per month. If you look down below there, her premium would be a thousand sixty-two eighty-four a month. The subsidy through, from the government she would receive would be seven hundred and seventy-five dollars towards that sub- that's where her premium would be, the two eighty-seven eighty-four each month. But at the end of the year, if she made too much money, she's gonna owe money back to the government. Where if she didn't make enough money and the subsidy was paid to her too much for the premium, she's gonna get a refund back at the end of the year for that.
Thank you, Mr. Obama.
Okay.
Do, do we need to continue this?
I don't think we can continue.
We gotta make a decision. We've got, they're gonna lose insurance on the tenth.
He's got Prius, he's got Prius on the phone.
Does anybody know?
Go, go ahead, Prius, what you got to say?
Okay, he said that it is set up to give you that credit in your premium instead of anything affecting your taxes at the end of the year. Nothing affects your taxes at that point. It gives you that credit up front.
I just don't know about that. I, I mean.
Got you. Thanks, Prius.
Yeah.
Where did, where did this company come from? How did we contact them? They contact us?
Let's see, this company, I guess we reached out to them, is that right, Prius? Yes.
I mean, they, they appear to be, based on their website, a very legitimate company. I mean, they're not a one guy, you know, um, but they do appear to be a, a fairly legitimate company.
Oh, I, 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 I don't wanna at all imply that I'm questioning legit- legitimacy of the company.
The Yahoo, yeah.
The literature here looks good. It's, uh, you know, a Yahoo account from a insurance salesman.
Jim, does it give a best rating?
I don't know that I can get into it, but it's got a CEO, uh, it says that they're, um, I'll see if I can find it.
What does staff think about the policy? Y'all, y'all are the ones being insured.
Well, um, eh, now that I've got Prius on the phone, I'll let her discuss, but it's my understanding that as far as what we could see over the, the table of what's, your co-pays are, what the coverage is and whatnot, it's actually better with the Friday than it was with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I think that was one of the reasons that, uh, it was presented and the cost savings. And so, but I'll let Prius speak on that as well.
Does she know anybody that's on this, actually on this? Healthcare?
Prius, do you know anybody that uses this healthcare?
I do not.
No.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I called the doctor's office to confirm and they indicated that anybody that is associated with the COME Health is what this plan mirrors and it is accepted through all the COME providers.
So are you comfortable with this? You guys are the ones that's being insured.
Can you hear, did she hear, did you hear Jimmy?
No.
Oh, are you comfortable with it?
Priscilla, are you comfortable, are you comfortable with this policy if, if it was voted on?
He needs to speak into the microphone.
I just, just ask her what I said.
Are you, are you comfortable with the policy, is what Jimmy's asking?
I am definitely comfortable with that.
Cause y'all are the guys that's got, you know. I know we're, we're, we didn't pay anything, we do this.
Well, I'm, thank you if the employees are comfortable and they, and, I mean, it does appear to be a legitimate company and, and they're definitely trying to make inroads into North Carolina. Um, so I, all we can do is try it for a year and see how it goes. I definitely don't think it's, it's a, I think it's a legitimate insurance company versus what we've dealt with in the past. So I do feel comfortable that they would have insurance. Um, so I would make a motion to accept the Friday plan as written and for the, I'm open for, for debate on this, but for the, uh, town to cover the entire premiums as prescribed, since they're considerably lower than what we're paying now.
How much, what are we paying now, Ms. Thacker?
Uh, well, what council approved, well, does to pay seven hundred dollars per employee per month, so it's fourteen hundred dollars per month. However, we're not paying that because the premium, you know, does not come up.
Be saving quite a bit of money going with this policy, even paying the total premium.
You're going from fourteen hundred to five hundred, it looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, and y'all are comfortable with it, cause you're the one, you go to the doctor.
Yeah, I understand. I want you to see.
Absolutely, from the, looking at the numbers, the numbers, yes, you're saving money.
Coverage is, coverage is the key, as long as the coverage is comparable.
We want you covered, that's why we have it.
Say that again.
Are you comfortable with the coverage that this, uh, Friday health plan offers? I know that, uh, you compare the tables between the two much more than I have.
Yes, I am comfortable.
Thank you.
What about you, Robbie?
I think it looks good. Um, whenever I did a quick comparison of the two charts, uh, it did appear to be better as far as deductibles, uh, prescription cost. Um, it's been a minute since I've looked at the tables, but, um, Prius and I did talk about it and, you know, insurance is definitely not my strong suit, so I take her advice on it and it looks good and.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Could, could the motion be repeated with the amount we're approving?
I will, I will restate the motion. Uh, it is my motion that we, uh, for the year two thousand twenty-three, that we pay two thousands, two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cent per month for Robbie Wagner's insurance and two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-four cent per month for Priscilla's insurance.
Now that does say estimated monthly premium, so there may be some leeway if, when somebody says estimate.
Well, I, I don't wanna split hairs. I'm just looking for a number not to exceed X amount or something. One reason being it's clear, clear-cut to authorize the finance officer to pay the bill for this. I would make an amendment that it would not exceed three hundred dollars per employee, per month.
Well, let's say three hundred for him and three fifty, because hers is already near three hundred. To give some leeway, hopefully it won't be, you know, but we don't want to have to come back revisit it for fifteen or twenty dollars. And I'm still second your motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the three hundred and three fifty.
I'll second your motion.
Now, does this affect, um, dental and vision at all?
No, uh, dental, vision and, um, short-term disability are all through, um, med cost, which is, uh, through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And, um, yeah, that's completely separate. This is just health and that'll get brought up in June. That's when that's up for renewal. So we've got some time on that one.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
I'm an a on the Friday plan.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Consideration and discussion of cleaning services for town hall and town park.
All right, that's, that's mine. I've got some information here. I've held this because I didn't know which route. Um, you know, we've, we briefly discussed this just a little, um, and I believe that council probably wants to continue, continue with, um, using a contractor instead of an employee. I don't know if I'm making assumptions for anybody, but is anybody, I, I have, um, I have, what?
I just wanted to say it is my desire to continue using a contractor to provide those cleaning services and I'll place that into a motion if anybody here thinks it necessary, but that's, that's what I wanna see.
Okay, well, I'll second that motion and, um, that's the reason I held this back, cause I didn't know that this, this person that, that I have, um, if we were gonna do an employer relationship, um, we'd have to do it in closed session. So if we do it in a contract, well, we can do it in an open session.
Have we deter- have we determined what we're gonna be paying?
Hand, hand this, hand this down. Let's, let's hand these down. This is kind of a job description on the back. Four hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, they were willing to come to work as a, I'm sorry, as a part-time employee. Uh, there should be one for the attorney. Mr. Winfrey. Um, they were willing to come to work for four hundred dollars as a part-time employee.
Do I get one?
Being, um, you, you wanna do a, a contractor relationship, they'll have to have insurance, so, of course, um, they want a little bit more money, so four seventy would be the number. That's fairly close to what we were at and I don't think we can get a company. This is an individual and, um, she's not, did you say something?
I was hoping we could vote to, to definitely stay on the path we're at using a company, a cleaning contract versus hiring an employee. And I was wondering if, if, if it would be appropriate to vote on that and then do a separate motion for-
I got, I'm getting out of here. You're right.
Uh, Mayor, you concur.
Okay, so what you're saying is we're gonna vote, uh, based on the motion and the second to hire an individual on a contract basis.
We're, we're voting to continue to use contract services for cleaning.
Very good.
Yeah, this is not for this individual person. This is just that, that we're gonna go that route.
We're at a fork in the road and I, I wanna continue and-
And we, and i- if something happens and, and we don't go with this proposal tonight, you know, we can always change it, but, but, you know, I've held this out because if we, we would have to go in a closed session if, if we were gonna, uh, hire this person. And you may not wanna do this, but we're just-
Well, if council votes for this motion, then we're on the road, we'll stay on the road to contracting. Any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also an aye.
Carry on, Mr. Landrith.
Okay, well, you see the description of the scope of work. Uh, there's one thing that I'll probably add, the, the trash cans. She's got trash cans on here emptying, but it doesn't specify a part, but she does know that. This, this young lady, um, is Priscilla's, and I'm, this is for disclosure, Priscilla's, um, son's girlfriend. She's a full-time employee and, um, she's interested in, in doing this on the side. It is a side job.
And, and you're disclosing this so everybody knows about the familiar relationship of so-
Absolutely, that's why I'm disclosing. It's not that we're doing it for Priscilla or anything that, uh-
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just disclosing it and if anybody has a problem with that, then, um, you know, you know, s- speak up. Um, everybody should know. But four hundred and seventy dollars, uh, that would be the, you know, you can see weekly the things and I mean, it's pretty, pretty detailed. She would be paid from whenever she starts in thirty days, um, the, uh, oh, I say she starts on the fifteenth. Uh, the next month, she'd get a check four hundred and seventy dollars and that, that would recur every month. And, um, you know, I'd like to, you know, I'd like for her to give a thirty-day notice if she decides to, i- it doesn't work out. Priscilla gives her real good marks. Um, I don't think she's done any professional cleaning before, but, um, I think that with the pro- she was actually gonna go to work for, um, our contractor we had and they decided to, to quit doing this scope of work. So she, she would have, um, possibly have been coming in here anyway, but, but, um, they decided to, you know, quit doing the commercial in.
Do we need to do a contract with her? Can we do this month to month?
I, I just, I'd just say do a month to month and, you know.
You know, I would feel more comfortable if we had a proposal or a contract from her in lieu of that. Uh, I would like council to consider having Mr. Winfrey draw up something very simple to, uh, outline the responsibilities of both parties and move forward from there. But we need something to, to operate off of, I would think.
If I may make a suggestion, um, s- we made some- If I may make a suggestion, we made some specific adjustments to our long-moan contract when we redid this last one. Maybe use that as a template as far as the, the thirty-day out and the.
Oh, certainly.
That kind of stuff. I mean, obviously the duties will, will substitute, but I think we, we have already kind of plowed that field. So let's just use what we've already done as far as the thirty-day out, be consistent across all vendors.
Sounds good.
But law, law requires any contract that we have be in writing, so we have to have some kind of written agreement with whoever's going to be doing this work.
And what Jim's saying is we already have the template you to use.
What timeframe do you think we could have something drawed up if we pass this? Because we're, we're out of.
They didn't do yesterday, right? So I, the, the headout you gave me, so I guess is, is this a fair description of the task that you're asking her to do?
Correct. The only, the only task that I'd like to add is to empty the park trash cans and she knows that. It just, it just didn't get put on here.
Mr. Winfrey, is, is there a way that we can do this contingent upon a, a contract being signed by both parties so that she can pick up where our, our current contractor has stopped? We're kind of under the gun a little bit in that we need her to start, you know, fairly quickly.
When, when is the, the current contract end?
It's over.
It's done.
Nine days ago.
It kind of ended on short notice.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to start it until, until we sign it and she starts. I mean, the day she starts, then in thirty days from that day.
I, I'm just asking Mr. Winfrey for what his advice might be if we're trying to make a fast start on this.
Well, if she's going to be a contract, if she's going to be on a working contract basis, then it needs to be a written agreement, I think, before she starts. So, so I would say we'll just probably get some cranked out early next week.
Mr. Winfrey, would it be appropriate to make a motion to authorize the mayor and Mr. Landrith to sign this contract on the behalf of council? If they approve, otherwise it comes back to council? So we don't have to have another meeting?
I think that's fine, as long as, you know, you could specify an amount.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a cap on it.
Specify the amount and as long as it's budgeted, then yes, it'd be fine.
Okay, can.
And will any motion include that she must have, you know, insurance liability?
Absolutely. She knows. That's, that's why the four seventy instead of the four hundred. See, like I say, she's willing to come to work for the, you know, part-time. And, but she's going to supply insurance, so.
Well, you want to shoot for the motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with Whitney Woody for the amount of four hundred and seventy dollars per month for cleaning services for the town.
Weekly, you said month?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're going to pay her monthly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's weekly cleaning services for the town hall and, and the park as outlined. Is anything else I should add?
So she's only coming in once, once a week, is that what?
Once a week, it's listed, I think, the way, the way she'll do it. And, you know, we may, we, we did this on the other contract in the summer when things, we would switch it around a little bit. They might do the, the bathrooms at the, the park twice or something, but I mean, we don't, we didn't put it in the other contract and.
I will second that motion Mr. Landrith provided. We can attach the task list that has been presented to council here and Ms., Ms. Woody accepts that.
Absolutely, yes.
And, and with the provision that the council would authorize you and the mayor, if you agree to sign the contract on the behalf of the town, just so long as it doesn't exceed the four hundred and seventy dollar per month weekly charge and provided that she procures public liability insurance with a limit of, what does that need to be?
The limit.
You know, want her to be insured, right? So I guess.
What, what, what limit?
Was it, does the template that we use for the, for the lawn to have an insurance limit?
I'm sure it does. If we could get Robbie to, just in the morning to, to email that, the lawn care.
I mean, how much, how much liability? I mean.
Well, usually I would think a million dollars would be appropriate in this day and age, all things considered. I, I don't think it would save her any appreciable amount of money to specify five hundred thousand and our duty is to protect the town.
All right. Million dollars it is and.
All right, that's my second.
Is the motion clear, Robbie?
I believe so. So let's see, first of all, Jimmy made a motion to enter into a contract with Whitney for the cleaning service at town hall and town park for a monthly amount of four hundred and seventy dollars. And then I know that Councilman Jones wanted to add that we attached the list of duties and that the mayor and Mr. Winfrey signed the contract on behalf of the town as well.
Not Mr. Winfrey, Mr. Landrith.
Put and.
And.
The mayor and.
They, they both.
Not or, both of us need to look at it and sign it.
They both have to, they both have to agree, otherwise the matter comes back to council.
Absolutely, okay. And on behalf of the town, and then also that she is insured for up to one million. Is that correct?
A minimum, a minimum of one, one million in public liability insurance that the staff will verify.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
That was.
That was.
I seconded with the amendments. We do have a second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? And I am also an aye.
Just, just one question, just to clarify things on this list. So for example, if I look under the walls, woodwork and overhead, some are monthly, some are weekly. Right, so, so they're all noted.
Right.
That they're all, on the second one, general cleaning, everything's weekly, except for dusting blinds monthly. And so the item to be added was one, emptying the park trash can?
The park trash cans.
In the park.
And how often is that to be done?
That'd be weekly.
Okay.
And I think we may have the contract from our current cleaning service. I can send that over to you as a template if that will help.
That would be great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Consideration of alternate application, consideration of application for alternate member of the town's planning board. I believe that was Mr. Foy's.
Oh, she. Where'd he go?
That's me.
That's you?
Is it?
Is her? Talked about it after the meet.
Huh? Is there a problem?
We talked about it after the park improvement meeting.
Did it? Oh.
Alternate member for the town's planning board?
Okay, we've got an application for T. Stevenson who's sitting right over here. He's helped out a whole lot in the, the park committee. He seems to be here at all the meetings. He comes to all the park meetings. He runs circles around me. I think he's, you know, I think he'd make a good addition. I don't vote for, I, I vote for folks that I think are property rights people. I know we have a duty to the town, but I believe T. will balance that out and think about people's property rights when he's on this and, and, and I think he'll think about the town too. Because we have, we've got a balance in that and he'll definitely, he'll definitely be there and that's, that's one big part of the planning board. We, we, right now we're in, in, you know, good shape with people, but, and, and they show, but that's not always the case. Sometimes it's hard to fill seats. But I, I'd like to make a motion to nominate T. Stevenson to the planning board.
I'll second that. It's an alternate to the planning board.
And I, I'm sorry, an alternate to the planning board. I'm getting, getting ahead of the.
That's okay.
And you know, you will have to take some training. There's some tapes and stuff that you have to, and hopefully we need to get the train, the, the tapes are kind of getting out of date. We need to get the planner to get in here and, and do a yearly training like they used to. Because I'm sure there's some things that's changed, you know, on the tapes. That might be something, if you would, contact our planner and ask him if we could set something like that up. We haven't had any meetings. That way we can get everybody together and, and do a training. And plus still do the tapes until we change the, we haven't changed the rules, so you'd have, you'd have to do that.
We have a motion? Do we have a second, Derek?
Yes, sir.
For clarification, Mr. Stevenson will be required to complete the current training modules that the other planning board members and alternates have completed. Is that correct? We're not deviating from that.
Correct.
Until further action by council.
If we ever start, if we ever get in the habit of doing the yearly trainings, then of course we'll do away with those tapes. There's still something good to look at. I mean, you know, boring, but they're interesting. It takes a long time, but you're correct. Do I have a second?
Yeah, yeah. I, I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Stevenson and I, I think he's, his best use is on the park committee. I'm impressed with his credentials since as far as being a layman to serve for the town in that capacity. And I've been watching his performance and, and he's an enthusiastic park improvement committee member. And I, I hope his time will not be unduly divided if he serves in this alternate position. I, I'm very particular about the planning board members that are, applications I vote on. I, I do what I can to confirm that they do live in a town of Stokesdale, research the history to the extent possible, have spoken to references and so on and so forth. With in the case of Mr. Stevenson, he's, he's, he just got here. He's been here five years, which in, in my world is just got here, but, but I, I did get the recommendation of, of two council members. So I, I feel fairly comfortable voting for Mr. Stevenson, but I hope he won't let me down.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Discussion of water system spending authorities and emergency water system repairs purchases.
That was my item, but Robbie's going to take this. I think we need some maybe possible clarification, Robbie, is that?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, just clarification. So let's see, I've got town staff, we ran across the town of Stokesdale's internal controls and separations of duty policy that was initially adopted on July twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. And then it was revised and re-adopted on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty. That's the most recent revision. And we'd just like clarification on the policy, more specifically, five A water system spending authorities. And I put that page in front of everybody. There's a paragraph there. Emergency water system repairs are defined as repairs and purchases that are necessary to avoid or repairs, repair items with imminent danger to the water system. Broadly defining imminent danger would include repairs to address items that would negatively impact customers' assurance of water supply or water quality, as well as any infrastructure in need of immediate repair. And the spending limit for emergency repairs is twenty-five thousand dollars per occurrence without a vote of the council. And so after running across this policy, we thought of the most recent water leak that we had back in October, near the family dentist office there at the intersection of sixty-eight and OT, sixty-eight and Hall River Road in between Hall River and OT's lane. This emergency water leak was brought to the attention of staff. Staff put in a work order with Yates to repair the leak. Yates did it, but this was done all at a staff level without a vote of council. I just wanted to clarify that the proper actions were taken and just, I know myself, I've never noticed this policy until we looked for it. And so I ran across it. Just wanted clarification that town staff acted correctly and, and you're all discussion on how to handle these matters in the future for emergency water line repairs.
Well, my opinion, you did and, and I commend you and I'm sure, you know, the food line shopping center in Stoke Ridge and the dentist office also thanks us for quickly reacting to that and I believe that was a forty-seven hundred dollar expenditure.
Correct.
I don't know another way that we would have done that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess by the, by the rules here, any two council members can agree on it. And, and I'm sure we would have two council members that agree on it. Is that correct? Going forward, I mean, it says without a vote of council, any, any two council members together have a twenty-five thousand spent. Twenty-five thousand occurrence.
Ms. Thacker, how, how are you providing the pre-audit certification on these expenditures without an authorization from council?
Kim, was it in the budget?
Yes, that's right. I mean, I would definitely would not pay the bill if it was not in the budget. Per statute, I'm not going to do that at all. And if it's not in the budget, I would bring it to council to be approved, you know, for a budget amendment, request a budget amendment. I will not write a check if it's not in the budget.
Yeah, I wouldn't speak necessarily about the budget. I was talking about the requirements for the pre-audit, pre-audit certification.
If it's in the budget.
It wouldn't require.
Right, it wouldn't require a pre-audit certification if it's in the budget.
Mr. Foy, we keep coming back to this. I, I'm not going to stand in front of a locomotive here. There's two things I want to point out. This, this language in the draft, in the copy that we have in front of us, there's a paragraph that's been struck through. I don't know what that means. Does it mean the separation of duties policy that we currently have? This language has been struck and it's not applicable? Or that staff is recommending that this language be struck from this separation of duties policy?
This was, I, I'm pretty sure, didn't we have this struck? Because it says emergency repair purchase may be approved by polling town council and polling town council is not legal, is it?
It, it could.
That's why we've got these two member deals.
It could be done if it were to, if you were just polling two, two, two members.
Well, it doesn't say that. It says polling town council and then when we go down here now, it says any two council members, so that would be legal.
I didn't write it, but no, you can't poll council.
But I think that's why it was changed, because it says approved by polling. It don't say two members of town council. It says polling town council, which that means all of us, which would not be legal. I think that's why it got changed. And now it's any two council members together have, have the spending authority. I guess what, what Robbie, what everybody's saying is, you know, they've got to get the water fixed. So, and, and if you read here, council member must be aware of any emergency expenditure. The finance officer within two business days of the emerg, of the emergency expenditure, all council members must be made aware. Okay, so the two make the decision. So what we need is, we need two council members. And I think, have we already, have we delegated that to Tim and the mayor? Did we do that one time? I mean, I know Tim should take care of what?
No, no, this, this policy is designed such that if we have five council members and, and I guess in a sense, the first two available would be able to respond and, and allow the town to affect these repairs while at the same time maintaining some, the, the council's responsibility to maintain the fiscal control of the money.
So what would you want to do if we, we got, I know you were on the scene on this one, the, the town.
Yeah, but I, I didn't sign off on anything.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. What, where, where do you want to go with this? Because we had to fix the water. And we got to pay the bill, so what, what do you want us to do? I mean, that's. And, and we got to pay the bill. So what, what do you want us to do? I mean, that's.
Well, it's. This is not on me legally. It's on Ms. Thacker legally.
If it's in the budget, I do not have to pre-audit. I mean, if it's in the budget.
That, it, it, then, 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 then that's fine. I, I do wanna make a statement for the record. And, and Mr. Winfrey, if you would, just bear with me, but we may, I may ask for advice on this at a later date. The town of Stokesdale operates as a mayor council form of government. It is not a manager council form of government.
Right.
Okay, as such, uh, and, and I have attended countless meetings and who knows how many motions I've voted on at this point, but uh, the, the current method of dis- dispersment on these, these expenses is contrary to how we've previously handled this in the town hall. And it is my contention based on the North Carolina general statutes that the pre-audit certification process requires either an approval that's ongoing such as to pay the light bill for the building, for example, or a, an action that council took tonight, for example, to hire the, uh, uh, the cleaning person we just hired. Or has some sort of contingents, contingent policy such as the separation of duties policy to allow for the unforeseen to affect emergency repairs. Or those, those spending authorities have to be delegated to a, a managing town employee or, or at least a town employee. And so it, it needs to be clearly spelled, spelled out as I understand it to, uh, meet the standard set forth by the, uh, North Carolina general statutes. I, help me out, Ms. Thacker. Is it North Carolina general statute one fifty-seven, those thirteen pages that govern how governmental units, uh, have to handle money?
Yes, I think it's one fifty-seven.
Okay, so, so, you know, Mr. Winfrey, I, I, I just, you know, throw myself on the mercy of the court here. I, I don't wanna get involved in anything, any spending improprieties personally.
Well, I think as long as the council has laid out parameters, or which is delegating to some subset of the council to act, which is doing, they're doing here by allowing two members.
Yeah, but we're not following this.
Well, so that's a problem. I mean, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So the scenario Robbie talked about earlier, I wasn't clear if any town council members were involved in that decision to make the repair or not.
No, uh, well, uh, one was contacted, um, but as far as.
Authorizing it?
Authorizing it. It was just a work order was put in and then it was fixed. And so I'm, that's, I'm still kinda confused on the clarification myself and that, uh, this, this one paragraph ends in stating the spending limit for emergency repairs is twenty-five thousand dollars per occurrence without a voice, a vote of town council. And so, and then it goes on to say any two council members together have the authority to spend this twenty-five thousand.
For these repairs, which I think, uh, which I think is, I would read it, I mean, talking about the ones in the previous paragraph.
Correct, correct.
And so I think, A, I think what the council should do is write a file that's, that the repairs you made earlier.
Okay.
Without their approval, uh, prior approval, so that the council can write a file that and say, we approve what you did. And by the way, we need to amend this policy to allow the staff, if you want to allow the staff to be able to make these decisions within a certain dollar amount.
Yep, yep. I, I'm not asking for changes. I'm just, you know, as we go into this, we, we might need to seek further clarification from you.
Okay.
You know, later regarding this matter in my opinion, but, but just, um, my opinion is the way to handle this, Yates Construction does the bulk of our emergency repairs. It is to maintain a, a price list from them that would detail how much they charge per man or, or for each dump truck per hour. You know, the markup on materials, et cetera, et cetera. And utilize that in an emergency or ask for, uh, uh, basically an emergency quote that, uh, for a number not to exceed, you know, we, we, we'll guarantee this repair not to exceed X amount. Such that, that two council members can approve that. And, uh, that is also consistent with how we've done it in the past in the building based on legal advice from town attorneys and based on advice from, um, CPAs with, you know, governmental training. And, and so I, I don't pretend to be an, an expert at this, but, but it's just, I'm familiar with what Stokesdale's done in the past. And, uh, and I'm also at the same time trying to protect our finance officer from any, uh, inconsistencies or snafus. And, and so I think it's an important thing to, you know, be sure we're, we're on the correct path with.
Ms. Thacker, how much was the total for that check?
It was forty, four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Okay.
And it's, it's been paid.
Uh, well, today. It hadn't, the check hasn't been cashed yet, so I'm along with, is anybody else on council want to notify the rest of council? The four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents has been paid. I mean, that's legally what we're supposed to do, I guess.
The, the process requires the approval to occur before the debts incurred is, is, as I understand it, is, is the problem.
How are you gonna do that?
Yeah, it's not.
You're, you're, you're sitting there, they're digging a hole. I mean, I'm just saying, how are you gonna do that?
Okay.
Digging a hole, fixing a water pipe.
Well.
And we don't know how much it's gonna cost. I mean, you, you, you. We're gonna tell you to stop and.
Allow me to answer your question. I'll, I'll say it again. I, I think the, the way to handle this to, to meet, to satisfy all the requirements is to get back to how we used to handle it. We had a, a price list that, that set forth the rates that our public utility contractor would be charging us in the immense, there was an emergency. It's basically a menu that details, you know, the unit costing that they're gonna utilize. Either that or, or we request them to give us a, a, a cap in a contract. And I, I didn't say it was easy, and I'm certainly not contending that we, we delay in, in affecting a, a water main repair at all. I just wanna be sure that, again, uh, we're meeting all the requirements of the North Carolina general statute. And, uh, I, I have a lot of experience in this town hall with previous attorneys and, and previous CPAs and, and, and I just, uh, you folks would certainly want me to say something if I thought we were going off, off in the weeds. And so that's what I'm doing.
What I wanna know, for the same reasons that you just stated, this situation, we got this situation right here that we just had. What should we have done that different than, than what's done? What, what would be, what you would say the perfect scenario i- i- for this to be handled?
There isn't, there is no perfect scenario. We just had to follow the legal requirements.
And what did we not do to not follow the legal requirement?
Well, I think that if I understand what Mr. Jones is saying, our established policy didn't really contemplate this scenario. So I think at some point we should amend our policy to allow, m- maybe that's what he's saying. I'm not sure I understand, but i- if, to, to amend the policy to take this into account. So.
We, we have a policy that's been passed. It's in effect. We just need to follow it until council, you know, decides to make changes.
Is this as simple as?
How was it not followed?
Well, I, it, it says that the two people had to notify council. The, the expense was four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars, eighty-one cents. Does anybody want to go along with me to notify council? Council's notified with, by me.
I can, I can pull up emails and read them.
Yes, email not sufficient. I think if the town staff receives notification, if we wanted to put it that they have to notify two specific people and document that they notified them on this date just to satisfy the statute, then that's fine. But I think a, a, a ta- an email has been, has been sent in the past to everyone that says we have a water leak. We've contacted Yates. I think that's fairly sufficient of notification. Um, if you wanna get two council members' names to attach to the record, then, then do that. Then just reach out to two of us and, and we'll do it.
Well, I just asked. I, I, I mean, that makes this legal. The check hasn't been cashed. Uh, I think it's dated today as far as the, the, the final, uh, everything. So that, that puts this, and then we need going for, uh, uh, forward, then we need to do whatever it is we need to do. And I'm still not sure about that. But I, I'd be, I'd like to know, uh, because I don't want us to, I don't want us to do anything wrong or get in trouble. I don't want Ms. Thacker to get in trouble. Um, you know, by no means. I mean, she's, I don't think. I know, I know. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying.
If, if we're confident that, that we're, we're on the right path, then, you know, I just want my objection noted and, and Mr. Winfrey, I think has heard me, so I'm satisfied.
Okay.
And it was statute one five nine.
I beg your pardon?
General statute one five nine.
Okay, that sounds familiar.
And what I wanna know is i- if we're doing something wrong, you know, let's fix it. If there's some, if there's a problem, uh, I mean, we know all the problems we want. We need to fix them if we, if we've got something, if we, you know. You know, I'd be more than glad to entertain whatever anybody wants to do.
Well, my, my takeaway from this is that, uh, Robbie's not convinced that the situation we had fell squarely within our established procedures. And so we may need to revisit the reestablished procedures.
I think Robbie's concerned about that, you know, i- i- I don't want him to get gun shy because we, if we get a water leak, he, he wants to know whether he can call somebody. He don't wanna get in trouble.
Correct.
He don't wanna have a problem.
Correct.
That's why, he's worried about it.
Yeah. And, uh. Absolutely correct.
So then go back to my suggestion, call two council members randomly, get, tell them the scenario, get their approval. And then you're covered according to the separation of duty policy, the way I would see it.
Well, you know, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
You know.
All you, all, I think the missing piece here is you didn't call two council members and get their, their quote okay. You sent an email out, you know, and maybe some of us replied, maybe some of us didn't. So, you know, I think you just need to cut, to cover yourself. Just make contact and get two, ask two specific people, specific, are you willing to sign off on calling Yates?
Absolutely.
You know, I'm gonna give Tim credit. And if Tim was out, he was up there on the job. I mean, he, you know, he knew what was going on as, as far as, I mean, he's concerned about the county and, and, uh, I mean, he was, he was the only council member up there.
He was, and, and he informed me of what he was doing.
Yeah, me too.
But he and I, well, okay. And, uh, the, between the three of us, we didn't actually do what he's asking, and that is to approve the expenditure. But it makes sense before we commit to Yates or anybody else. And it's a simple matter of finding two of us.
Yeah.
And, and they just basically say, yes, you've got a confirmation with the telephone call and, and make note of the two council members that have approved it. So, uh, Ms. Thacker's not out there swinging in the wind. Okay?
Absolutely.
And there again, four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents was spent. And the check has not been cashed. It's not even been received yet. So we're still basically in compliance. Is there anybody else that will notify council with me about that check?
I'm notified. I'm notified.
Council is therefore notified.
Mr. Landrith and I are both notified. So the expenditure is good.
Just let everyone know Yates fixed the issue, so we are, we are good to go now.
Yep, yep. I'm looking back at your emails. I'm looking back at your emails and how you communicated this to council and then the timing of everything. And just wanna commend you for doing a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Very adequately. One could say it exceeded expectations given the timing of the matter. So I think you did a fantastic job. This was a good conversation to have, though.
We, we just wanna do things, Tim, you know, we just wanna do things right. Tim wants to do things right. He's, you know, he's seen some things that some of us haven't seen. So, you know, just, you know, they don't think we're going back and forth. We're just trying to fix it.
Budget amendment number one for HVAC ordered last budget year installed in November, twenty twenty-two.
That is mine. Hold on, let me get the minutes over here. Okay. Um, as you guys know, you did approve a budget amendment in, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, uh, for the heat and air units. They were ordered in fiscal year twenty-two. However, they did not come in until last month. Therefore, since we did not use the money in fiscal year twenty-two, the money fell back into the fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-two. Um, so I am requesting, um, since it was still in the fund balance and we did not include it in the, in the budget this year, um, I am asking for the budget amendment, this will be budget amendment number one. To increase the revenue income line of undesigned funds by twenty thousand. And to also increase section B expenses, item number forty-five hundred, which is town hall repair. Lord, I lost my paper. It's town hall repairs. Town hall repairs and maintenance expense.
Have you wrote that out? Have you got that wrote out?
It's, we got it in our packet.
You have, you have a, it's in your packet. It's supposed to be in your packet.
Oh, I got it, I got it. One page over.
Yes, okay.
Let me clarify something you said. You said that this had been approved in twenty twenty-two. You meant it had been approved in twenty twenty-one.
Fiscal twenty-two.
No, fiscal year twenty-two.
We didn't put this on the budget because we knew it was coming out. So this will come out of the general fund?
It's, it was, it would just roll, it stayed into the fund balance. It just rolled back into the fund balance.
Right.
So it's not like we're, I mean, it was still there from last year. And we just need to get it back into this year's budget. So when the check, the bill, the invoices come in, I can write the checks.
That's part of the money. We were what, sixty-seven thousand or something that was, that we didn't spend?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment as laid out by town fi- finance officer Kim Thacker.
Yeah, second?
Aye.
Mr. Foye? Mr. Foye?
I'm right here.
Mr. Mr. Rigsby just voted.
Yeah, I'm ready to go. Let's go.
He's rolling.
He's hungry.
I know he is.
I gotta work third shift tonight.
Food trucks already left.
So, I mean.
Crank up, crank up that new air conditioner. Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
We do need a second for the record.
I, I need the motion restated.
Can you second it?
Yeah, I second the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Landrith seconded it.
Excuse me, I need the motion restated.
We'll get it, we'll get it.
I made a motion that we approve the budget amendment as, as laid out and documented and included in our packet from finance officer Kim Thacker.
Okay, Mr. Foye, I'm not voting for this unless the amendment's identified. And that the, uh, we find out what the original amount was so I can pencil it in for each one of these categories.
That's your prerogative, sir.
Well, that's, that's where I'm at.
Well, it's budget number one, right?
Yes, budget number one. Yes.
Budget amendment number one.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, budget amendment number one. I'm sorry.
I'll add that part to the motion if that's okay. I'm gonna second the motion.
Yep.
I'll repeat, I'm a aye.
Is that okay with you, Derek?
Yes, sir.
I had to.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Huh?
Mr. Jones?
I'm a aye.
I'm an aye. Discussion of, of, uh, discussion to hire a public utility consultant. Mr. Jones and I had the, uh, good fortune of, uh, meeting, uh, Mr. Uh, Tim Lemmons, who is, uh, about to retire from the, is it the Eden Water System or is it the Dan River Water System?
Dan River.
Okay, uh, he's, he has been in charge of that for the last thirty years or better. And, uh, simply retiring because he likes, so many of us have grandchildren and uh, just would like to be able to spend a little bit of time with us. We have a proposal of him maybe working as, as much as three days a week. I don't think it's gonna take anywhere near that. But it will, we think it will, will require a retainer, um, as well as an hourly rate for whatever he is doing. Mr. Jones, if you would elaborate.
I thought you were doing a good job, Mr. Mayor.
Well, th- this is a person that would oversee our water system, um, keep us out of trouble. He's already given us a couple of good ideas of how we can make sure that this thing remains, um, sol- solvent, um, so that it pays for itself. If he were to come, if he, if he is agreeable to what we're suggesting, he would start as early as January one. He would have to, of course, come up to speed with what we have done and what we are currently doing. He is not gonna be over any particular person, although he would work closely with Priscilla and Gary, am I correct? He would be the one that would, uh, be our consultant for any time we, we're having, uh, any negotiations with Hazen, that kind of thing. He is the water expert. Carry on, sir?
Uh, well, I'd like to let council know that we, we didn't purposely delay this to the day, the meeting until the day before the council meeting. Mr. Lemmons had had a recent medical procedure and that was a little unexpected, and he was recovering from that, so that delayed our, our meeting, and thus the communication to, uh, to council. Uh, council was emailed the, uh, twelve points that were, the twelve points that are planned to become the basis of our, uh, agreement. And, uh, I s- I see where there's several different ways we can go with this, but, um, uh, Mr. Mr. Lemmons would like to review, uh, a contract from the town of Stokesdale, and, uh, you know, there's a possibility that he may ask for changes, it may or may not be acceptable to us, the, the, the only risk here I see is just the, the expenditure or the legal time to have Mr. Winfrey take these twelve points and, and put them into a suitable agreement. Uh, insofar as, uh, his qualifications and, and, uh, the result of this interview, you know, the interview the mayor and I had with him, I'm very impressed with the gentleman. Uh, he's operating a water system with roughly about five thousand customers. He supervises two, two people in the office and, and, uh, three people in the field that, uh, you know, they do all their billing, they read water meters, they, they do locates, uh, they do their taps, they do most of their repairs. Uh, he has, uh, about four hundred miles of water main he's responsible for. And I, I think maybe three elevated tanks, three, three to five, uh, his area is, uh, basically to the west of Eden. It's a water system that I really didn't know existed until recently, the, the Rural Water Association, uh, circuit writer referred me, uh, to him suggesting that I, I might contact him because, uh, he was, he would be retiring soon and had the sort of experience that might be beneficial to the town of Stokesdale. I, uh, and I, you know, I, I, it's taken a while for us to, again, get in the same place at the same time, and the, the mayor was gracious enough to ride along and, 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 uh, also, uh, get his, you know, input into this, and I, I think it's a real, uh, real an oppor- opportunity for the town. Uh, you know, certainly if there's, uh, if council wants to, to interview him separately or, or make phone calls and, you know, address any concerns council members might have, I, I think that's perfectly acceptable. Uh, I just don't see any, any risk here, except the, uh, the, what, whatever we may expend on a, on a contract if this doesn't come to fruition. Uh, the, the other matter in it, uh, we have tentatively agreed to a liaison committee of two council members to, to work with him, and, uh, this council would need to decide which two council members we're gonna propose to, uh, to do this thing. And so, uh, I could see two motions need to be made, one to, uh, request that Mr. Winfrey put this in contract form, and the other being to select those two, two council members. And I.
Just a clarification, are you considering to be a part-time employee or a contract?
It'll be a.
He would contract.
Contract.
Is he gonna have to have insurance?
No, no, that's right, it is an employee, isn't he?
No, he'll be a vendor.
I'm talking about liability insurance.
No, he'll be an employee, won't he? At forty-seven dollars an hour?
No employee.
No, no, that, no, 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 no.
Okay.
No, not, not, that's not my intent at all.
Okay.
That'll just be his, uh, part of, part of his compensation. Uh, so let's see, insurance, uh, Mr. Landrith, if you'd refer to item number twelve.
I'm not talking about health insurance, I'm talking about liability insurance, like the clown lady get.
Mr. Landrith, if you refer to item number twelve, the town of Stokesdale may require you to maintain public liability insurance, depending on the requirements of and or the judgment of town's attorney and insurance carrier.
Yep.
Well, again, this is a starting place, I, I, you know, it wasn't intended to be an all-inclusive, uh, agreement that, that council could finalize tonight, and we had to start somewhere, and, and this is what the mayor and I, along with Mr. Lemmons, uh, tentatively agreed to.
I understand, but this, that's an item that we can, I mean, we, you know, what, what's the may part? Either we are or we're not, or?
We are or we're not what?
Requiring, uh, liability insurance?
Yes, he's a contractor, he has to cover his, has to cover himself.
Okay, I'm just saying it says may here, so that, that, that's not a.
Well, okay.
So we are gonna require insurance.
The same million dollars, is that what we, is that the same?
That seems to be good.
I, I'm certainly good with it. Uh, I, I think, uh, we wrote may in because in our conversations, we did not specifically address the, the insurance matter. So, you know, we covered a lot of territory in the, in the short meeting that we had, I think the mayor will agree with. Uh, we, we talked about his system and our system and, and how he might be beneficial to the town. Uh, you know, it was, uh, I, I thought a very productive meeting.
We appreciate you going and doing this, you and Mike.
Yes, certainly, I, I'm open to any, any changes council desires or, or any that, uh, town attorney recommends and or the finance officer. Again, this is just a starting place.
Mr. Winfrey, I would, I would, item number five, it says we would, uh, pay mileage one way from, uh, basically his home office to our town hall. I would strike that, uh, as anyone else, uh, I don't get paid to come up here, I'll, uh, what, one-third of a mile? Uh, so, that, I would just strike that item, it would be from, it would be from the town hall, it would be from, it would be from his home office to his destination of, uh, of work, other than, other than the town hall, am I?
Mr. Mayor, let, let me, let me make a motion and see someone to second it.
Alright.
And then council can edit this to their heart's content, I think that would, I need to back up and do that. I'll make a motion that we will, uh, give this to Mr. Winfrey and have him draft a, a suitable contract using these twelve points as a, the basis, the starting point. And, uh, that along with any other, uh, other language he thinks appropriate and or any, uh, any details the town finance officer may, may require.
Mileage.
And to.
My bad.
And to identify it, I, I will, uh, identify it as an email sent to Mr. Mike Lemmons Consulting, December the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at three fifteen P M. And the council members have this email and Mr. Winfrey has one, correct?
I do now, yes.
Okay. And that would be my motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Well, now, I, I think it'd be appropriate for council to make additions or deletions or changes that, and that gets us all on the same page.
In the mileage area on, uh, item number four, uh, he would need to provide to Ms. Thacker documentation of beginning and ending mileage.
But, uh, beginning and ending odometer readings, is that?
I'm sorry, beginning and, and ending odometer readings for, uh, uh, mileage re- mileage compensation.
Okay.
Uh, that, that sounds cumbersome, wha- wha- what if he just kept a log of his miles and submitted that monthly?
I think the IRS would ask for beginning and ending odometer readings, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken.
My experience, it's never happened.
As long as he's keeping up with his own, I mean, he keeps up with his mileage, it's not our responsibility what he submits for the Internal Revenue Service, however, what he submits, to me, I just need his mile, the mileage, I don't have to have the beginning and ending, um, that's not what I do with, uh, Mr. Machunas either.
Okay, so I just tell you, I've, I've driven eighty miles and you pay me whatever you pay me for eighty miles?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the same unless I go out to his vehicle and check it each time he comes.
I, I, I will support that if the mayor wants to do that, I, I, we're spending, you know, as I say, we're spending public money, we, we need to be careful with it.
Well, I know what the state does, when I was on the board of elections, they would say, uh, Greensboro to Raleigh is X miles, so they would say that's how many miles you're getting.
Right, you don't have the odometer reading.
From, from his office to our first water hydrant, do you know how many miles that is, or would he know how many miles that is, or? And then he turns around and he goes, I'm just.
Does he have an office?
He'll have one in his home.
Okay.
Um, as an employer, again, trying to keep people honest, this is, this is something I had required.
Well, if we're concerned about him being honest, then we shouldn't be having a discussion about hiring him.
Well, okay, that's fine.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I support that, I, let's just keep it simple, we're spending public money, and it's a matter of his honesty, I, there, there's, I have no reason to question his honesty or integrity. Uh, it, I, I think the mayor's just simply trying to, uh, always have a system in place that, that, uh, uh, allows, I mean, requires accountability from, you know, council members, staff, vendors, and I certainly support that.
And I use that term as a cliche, I didn't mean to imply that we couldn't trust him, we, I, 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 with Mr. Jones agree, we're gonna be lucky if we can get this guy.
I agree.
Any further discussion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, as far as item number five, you wanted to strike that compensating him for commuting trips. And, and that's something we didn't define with him in our meeting, in our brief meeting with him, so it, it's, I think it's open for negotiation, but, but if that's what you wanna do, I will support that, so, so we're going to, uh, exclude commuting mileage, uh, the town is not gonna pay him for commuting mileage from his home to this town hall.
That's correct, I would strike that.
Okay. Okay, what else?
That's all for me.
And then the insurance requirement we already talked about, so.
That's in there.
Okay, I'll be sure I mark my copy, uh, so I can keep up with you guys, item number twelve, we're gonna strike, uh.
Not striking anything there.
Is there any reason?
Where, where it says may require insurance, the town of Stokesdale will require.
Yeah.
Okay. Strike, strike that and insert will, okay, what else? Mr. Rigsby?
Sir.
Do you feel good about it?
Um, I, I throw my only concern out to you, and, and it's just 'cause we don't know, we're just throwing a million dollars out randomly in the air. Uh, to me, the water system is a lot more valuable than the trashcans and the, the carpet at town hall. Um, I mean, you think a million's enough, I mean, I, should we do a little research in that?
I, I'm okay with it being two million, I'm just generally kinda going by what's in common usage out there in the business world that I encounter.
I understand, I'm just.
I don't know what's common to water systems, you know.
That's why I'm asking, should we just, before we concrete on that million, should we just see if there's a range, or?
Well, I, I, I will, I will say this, and, and maybe we need to back up and address it. When, when I tried to put forth the idea that we require in public liability insurance from Gary Machusis when he was working as a vendor, I couldn't get any council support for that, he's a, he's an employee now and it doesn't apply, uh, I don't think, but it still may be something we need to look at as far as coverage for him and make sure that, you know, whatever insurance coverage he doesn't have, that, that our town insurance is adequate. Uh, one of the things I always think about is that, you know, those guys or any of us being out on the, you know, stopping on the side of the road anywhere for any reason, you know, it's dangerous out there, y- you of all people certainly know that, and so, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with two million, if you wanna go to that.
Yeah, will you clarify?
He's not gonna be tinkering with the system, though, right, he's a consultant.
That, that is true, but, but certainly he may have an occasion to visit our, our, uh, water facilities or, or go, you know, go out in the field and talk to Yates, for example, but no, he, he is not going to be doing any work.
And my thought was, based on our earlier conversation, maybe I misunderstood it when you were talking about turn, opening valves and turning valves and things like that. So if he's not going to be touching the valves or anything, then that's fine.
Mr. Mr. Rigsby, the point I was making is, to my knowledge, the town of Stokesdale has a water system that's been in the ground for a number of years, and we have never exercised the valves in the ground, this is a common practice with water systems, and we have not done that.
So that's why I'm saying if he, if he's not physically doing it, and he turns it the wrong way and it blows the system up, you know.
No, and, and I, I would be confident if anybody would know how to turn a water valve, it would be him. But, but no, I wasn't suggesting he was gonna do that, I was using that as an example of the task that we need to get on top of.
Yeah.
And, and so, uh, I'm sorry, I, I may have confused you, you know, I try to go fast to, to, to get through this stuff.
Didn't, didn't, I just, I thought maybe he was just somebody that could, we were bringing him on 'cause he could do things like that we didn't, we didn't already do, so that was where I was.
No, what, what the mayor and I are, are, are just, you know, interested in doing here is harnessing his experience, uh, you know, this, he is already managing a system that Stokesdale will grow into someday, you know, maybe out there twenty years, I, I, you know, thirty years, I don't know how long it'll take. But, uh, I know from experience with past council, uh, the Rural Water Association, uh, th- these guys are hard to find that have this kind of knowledge base that are available for either employment or consultation. And so I, I would encourage the council members to go talk to this fellow, call him on the phone, email him, do whatever you wanna do. I, I would want you to be comfortable with him, you know, before we, you know, get to the end game here and vote on the, on the, uh, contract that Mr. Winfrey's going to prepare.
I guess. You done?
Yes, sir.
I don't wanna interrupt. As far as the money goes, the, uh, you know, we have a application, Derek, didn't you say that the, uh, we'll know something about the grant in February?
That's, that's what I've been told, yeah.
Would we be able to use this, um, as?
I don't, I don't know.
Part of that grant?
I, I don't know, I mean, there.
We'll receive it, I know we wouldn't.
That, that, that grant is, is, is possibly, I mean.
Ms. Thacker, you have any opinion?
Uh, I do, and I also have a question after my opinion. Um, it, this is not in the budget and I would have to have an amendment before he could be paid. Um, number one. Number two, um, item number six, where it says you will be responsible for your own taxes and general business expenses subject to any requirements of the town of Stokesdale Finance Officer, tax laws, et cetera. Um, I understand I would have to request a Form W nine from him. I guess my question is, um, about the general business expense subject to any requirements, I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean, as far as general.
Privilege, privilege license.
It, it means we're not gonna pay the power bill at his home office, uh, if, if, is, is what we were trying to address.
He has to have a privileged license to do this, that'd be his expense.
Well, I guess we're.
That's very vague, it's a very vague in my.
Well, well, we'll accept any clarification you wanna make here.
Okay.
Clarify it.
I, I, I think it's extremely vague, so I think it needs to be more detailed as far as we will not pay for a privileged license, or maybe Mr. Winfrey has a suggestion on line item number six, maybe how detailed it should be, but I think it's extremely vague.
We're basically not gonna pay for anything that sets him up as a consultant.
Or as Mr. Jones said, we're not gonna pay for lights or anything like that, but I mean.
We're paying him forty-seven fifty an hour, plus the six thousand.
That's it.
I see.
And this does not include privileged license or any other type of license or anything like that?
That's right.
Can we get that put in there somewhere?
Yeah, we can put that in there. I may roll it up into.
And or certifications, if he wants to add a certification, we're not gonna pay for it.
I just think it needs to be more detailed, because to me, it's just extremely.
Uh, it, it was not intended to be a, a detailed agreement, it, it was, again, uh, what we could do in a short space of time in the absence of an assistance, assistance from you as a professional and Mr. Winfrey as a professional.
So, we passed a motion to, uh, to, to pass with, uh, the document that Tim presented on to Mr. Winfrey, uh, for him to work on that. And then after that, there's been a bunch of changes to that document, so what is he working with? In terms of, we, we marked off number five, I think?
We marked off the, the one-way trip reimbursement.
But that was included, that was included in number five, right?
If, if you would look, Mr. Foy, I, I think I would refer you to the last paragraph of this, this email, wherein he's reminded. wherein he's reminded that this, uh, that the town council may or may not accept any of these terms. And please, please keep in mind the Stokesdale Town Attorney may recommend and require modifications, et cetera. I, I think it should be clear to Mr. Lemmons and anybody that reads this that, again, this is just a starting place.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm for it, I voted for it. Also, I remember you saying there needs to be a, you recommended a liaison committee, uh, with two council members.
Well, I, I think that would be appropriate for another motion, uh, but I didn't include it in the motion that I just made to approve this, this list.
I know. I was, I was trying to preference making a motion. I was gonna make a motion.
If, if, I, I think it'd be appropriate if you wanna delete that or, you know, we can't insert language requiring three council members. That'd be a quorum, can't do that. Or if, if you, for example, wanna serve as a sole liaison.
Well, may I inquire, did Mr. Lemmons respond to this email? I don't see it respond.
He, he has indicated, uh, the mayor, mayor called him just before this meeting.
I had a telephone conversation and he is, he is still mulling it over. Don't know that this is gonna work for him either. But we, we feel comfortable enough to ask you to go ahead and see if you can't put together something in the way of a contract.
Okay.
And then the, the six of us will make that decision, I guess.
So basically, all we're doing here is Mr. Winfrey is gonna, uh, fix us up a contract to.
We're, we're voting.
Review and then.
Yeah, we're, we're voting to authorize Mr., requesting Mr. Winfrey to do this and expend whatever legal cost that is. And we're hoping that this will work out in the end for both parties. That's what we're doing.
And we have a motion on that and we have a second.
Can I?
There any?
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that's just a suggestion. Number four, um, where it's stating that you would pay at the rate of seventy cents per mile. Um, that's definitely over the standard mileage rate per the Internal Revenue Service. Could we put, you know, could we change?
What, what is the current rate, Ms. Thacker?
Sixty-two point five.
It's not sixty-something?
Sixty-two point five.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I can't have here. Sixty-two point five.
And that started July one. Of course, that changes every year.
Okay.
So I don't.
Then I'm, I'm okay with making, requesting that change. Sixty-two point five.
How about instead of a specific number, it's just whatever the current IRS approved rate is?
Yeah.
Well, what, what if we spec that it's currently sixty-two point five subject to, uh, changes by the IRS? Anything else?
Anything else? Any further discussion?
I think I'm okay now.
We got a motion, we got a second. Mr. Rigsby? Mr. Foy?
Haven't we already voted?
No, we haven't.
Not at least. Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
So who, who do you want me to pass this draft by when I've, where I've got it?
Say that, say that again?
I'm sorry?
Say that again?
Who, who's us in the draft to? Is that the next motion to figure who? Yeah.
Oh, who the liaisons are? Yes.
Mike, are you and Tim going to do that?
If you'll make that motion, I'll consent to do my part. And I would hope Mr. Jones would consent to do my part and his part.
He'll probably end up doing that.
I ain't gonna make a motion. I ain't gonna make a motion to put myself in this spot.
I'll make a motion that we form a liaison committee to work, uh, if we hire this consultant. Uh, and those two committee members would be Mayor Mike Crawford and Tim Jones.
I'll second.
Mr. Foy, would you consider identifying the email by date to, uh, Mr. Lemmons?
Uh, no, because I'm not referencing an email.
Mm-hmm.
I'm referencing the creation of a liaison committee to the gentleman if we hire him.
Okay, well. Okay, there's, there's a motion, identify Mike Lemmons so there's no confusion in the minutes in six months.
No, sir, I will make that change, uh, that the consultant is Mike Lemmons.
Still, sir. We could've been a liaison to everybody, couldn't we?
Well, you know, you got to. That was the original intent.
What they do to us here, you know?
That's late. Wanted to leave it open-ended.
Yeah, I, yeah. That's how we get the secretaries, at the HOA. The guys that doesn't show up, he gets to be the secretary. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I guess.
Yeah, I guess so too.
All right. Lost my place. Citizens' comments. Anyone want to comment on? Is anybody out there awake? Come on now. Uh, y'all are, y'all are, y'all are troopers. Big time. Yeah, really. No citizens' comments. I've got two. Uh, I'm working at it. I've got two announcements. Thank you, I got it. No petitions are filed. Meeting will be canceled. This is the, uh, Town of Stokesdale Planning Board. It'll be, uh, will be, will be, hold a meeting on Thursday. Town Planning Board will hold a meeting on Thursday. I'm sorry, the, the next meeting's on Thursday, December twenty-second at seven PM inside the town hall. The other announcement is the Town of Stokesdale Town Council will, will hold a regular town meeting on Thursday, January the twelfth, uh, at seven P, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM inside the town hall council. I will not be present. Mr. Foy, can I count on you to conduct that council meeting? Uh, yes, sir. Very good. Let's see, where are we going now? Mr. Ma- Mayor, also just, we're gonna have a special call meeting, uh, January fifth to discuss town park improvement projects. It'll be in the matter of a public forum. Did you get that, Robbie?
Yes.
Special meeting, okay. Under statute, uh, one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, uh, we're going into a closed session. Permitted purposes is to, is, it is the policy of the state that closed sessions will, shall be held only when required to permit a public body to act in the public intent of permitted in the section A, public body may hold a closed session and exclude public only when a closed session is required. Okay, we need to say our permitted purposes. So the permitted purposes, do you mind if I make a?
No, please do add to what I did do.
To consult with an attorney, uh, retained by the public body. Also to plan, conduct, or hear reports concerning an investigation of alleged criminal misconduct. We are in closed session, folks. We appreciate anybody staying this long, and if you'd like to, um, you're welcome to stay to the end. But, uh, after closed session, we will adjourn, I do imagine.
Do we need to vote to go into closed session?
Uh, we do need to do that.
Yeah, we do.
Make a motion, please. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yeah, we just said that, so you.
Is that the motion we just did? I did make that, I did make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Ms. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. It's exciting during the close, doesn't it?
She can't remember which one, so we're coming up on that about ten days right now. So then, then they said definitely by Christmas. So I told her, I said, I'd call that lady and just say, look, I need to know either yes or no, I'm getting a job. The details wouldn't work out when you're ready, but I, I, I've been waiting around for, you know, she's been waiting around for six months. She needs to know if she needs to move on or not.
I make a motion, we'll go back into open session.
Second motion.
Uh.
Jim.
Uh.
Ten.
What was the motion?
To go back to open session.
Okay.
Uh.
Uh.
We're all ahs. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Council discussion, any council discussion?
No.
I, I have some council comments if I may, Mr. May. I realize there's nobody here but an empty, empty room, but I.
We're not empty.
Let me get a chair, my, my knee hurt, sorry.
Glad not to be in a chair.
I'd like to express my thanks to Ms. Lander for once again sitting through a very long meeting. You're a dedicated wife. Thank Mr. Winfrey for completing his first meeting with us. And what I really want to comment about is I would like to extend our Merry Cr- Merry Christmas wishes to our citizenry. And remind everybody to keep safety in mind during our Christmas parade. And that's all I, all I have.
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas out there in YouTube land, in the audience. And I hope everybody will come to the parade Saturday. Some folks worked pretty hard on that and it should, should be a lot of fun. And count your blessings, we live in a wonderful place and, you know, it's a lot worse than a lot of other places in the world. We're, we're in a great place. I'm glad to be here.
Oh, it, I need to add one comment just for the record. Mr. Foy had to leave to go to, go to work, I think, and he was excused from the closed session meeting by council.
Anybody else?
The end.
Motion to adjourn?
I concur. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Say it.
Say.
Jim.
Uh.
Uh.
Tim, uh, and I am, I.
Thanks, Guy.
I got a question for you.
Mr. Winfrey, thanks.
Yeah, sure. I was looking on your website, I know you do state planning. I need to do.
Are you gonna have like a trust for anybody? You got any kids, grandkids that might be inheriting?
Mr. Crawford, do you have a moment?
Why, for you anything?
If you're pretty serious, you are gonna have any grandkids under twenty-five?
Step into my office in here.
I can do that.
My kids are, one of them's not even married.
You see Mr. Winfrey off.
Here's the four dollars I can talk about, we're talking about a will, healthcare power returning, driver power returning, investor acted. And four.